Plating Committee, September 4th, 2025.
Plating come to order at 6:00 PM. Members Aaron Scherik, Clarissa Slater, Vicki DeShawn, James Meachare. First up, public participation. Second up, we have encroachment zoning. And Mike's gonna fill us in on that.
The encroachment agreement?
Yeah.
The encroachment agreement occurs when a public right-of-way gets vacated and all the public utilities still exist in the ground. There has to be an agreement signed with the property owner stating that we still have access to the utilities for maintenance or replacement. So that's what it is. It's just stating that we have rights to maintain the public utilities that are on the property.
Does that give us the right to run new utilities through there or not?
For how narrow that right-of-way is right now and that there is going to be a parking lot on top of it, I would say no. So, but in case that line or lines ever have to be replaced, then I, I mean, either way, there's two sewer mains and a water main right there. So.
Where are we talking about exactly?
Aveda. The vacation of North Pleasant Hill. There's a, whenever, like I said, a right-of-way is vacated, there has to be an agreement for utilities that are left in that corridor.
Mr. Goldberg, do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Any questions from the committee?
No questions.
So does that need to be referred to council for?
Only draft legislation, correct?
Yes.
As an emergency?
As an emergency or not?
Yeah, it should be as an emergency.
Okay. Excuse me. If you will remember, at our last plating committee meeting, we entertained a motion for the encroachment, authorizing the service safety director to enter into an encroachment agreement with Columbia Gas that was at the suggestion of the law director, who said, well, hey, I mean, let's just go ahead and request the legislation now and if we need it, it's been requested and he can move forward.
That agreement was between Aveda and Columbia Gas. I gave that copy for an example. We're not approving the Columbia Gas Aveda agreement. That's in between two separate parties that we're not a party to. We have to do an agreement between Aveda and our utilities. That was just an example. We're not approving the agreement for Columbia Gas and Aveda. That's just between those two. That was just submitted as an example of the verbiage.
And so the agreement that we're talking about has to do with the city?
Our utilities, our sanitary and our water lines and our storm sewer.
Because that's not what the motion?
That was, it was a sample of the, how the agreement should be written. And I do believe I stated that.
Stated that where?
It was an example.
Was that given to the committee?
It was given to the law director.
Well, then, again, that's what was done. So that request for legislation is not accurate and we'll need to do another, well, here I am. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Jim?
I was just waiting for you to make a motion.
Oh, that's okay. You can go ahead and do it.
I can't.
Oh, Aaron, you can do it and I'll sit in there.
Wait, how do I get that? Yeah, well, I mean, I could've sworn when we talked last time, we'd said something about encroachment agreements. I didn't realize we were just looking at the gas, in all honesty. So yeah, I guess I'll make an emotion as an emergency.
Yes.
To create an encroachment agreement legislation with Aveda.
Between our utility company?
Between our u, well, we, the city of Bucyrus and any utilities we may have go through there in case there's something else that gets added that we don't know about yet.
Does that cover that then?
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ah, cumulative zoning. Why are you up there?
Okay. May I say something before?
Is this something?
Mike says something.
Go ahead.
At our last, at Tuesday's council meeting, Mr. Goldberg mentioned that he could not recall if there had been a referral done of the cumulative zoning. And if there hadn't been one done, he was asking that there be one done Tuesday night, which a motion was made to refer, to refer the cumulative zoning to both ad, to both special ad hoc committee for zoning and the plating committee. Motion was made and passed. I did some checking and back on July 8th, Mr. Goldberg had requested the referral of the cumulative zoning to the zoning ad hoc. Motion made, seconded and passed. So the question is, the first referral was just to the zoning ad hoc, as you had requested. The second referral you had requested was to go to the special ad hoc committee. But I know when the motion was made, Aaron, you added in plating.
Well, no action was made to go to plating and I added in the special ad hoc because I thought all the zoning was supposed to be going to the zoning ad hoc. And I wanted to make sure that all of our bases were covered because where it falls back is plating anyway. So that's why, we, yeah, no. They had suggested they go to plating and I threw in the ad hoc.
Then it brought up the question, do we need a separate piece of legislation for plating? Or do you want to leave it all in ad hoc?
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
To me, it should just be in ad hoc.
I figured it needed to be in ad hoc, but since plating is the original for that one, then just in case anything fell back that we needed to talk about in plating, it was good to have it here. Just like all the others, we don't really take them off open projects until.
Yeah, we have, Aaron. Yeah, we've taken them off. Yeah.
Okay, so does the committee just want to leave it in ad hoc? Or we'll leave it on our plating?
Do you guys want to talk about it?
Sure, please.
Because Mike's up here to talk.
Here are some examples of cumulative zoning for the research that I've looked into. Imagine a city with three primary zoning classifications in a cumulative system. R1, single-family residential, the most restricted zone allowing only single-family homes. C1, commercial, which is basically our general business in downtown business districts. Less restrictive zone allowing commercial businesses and all higher uses such as residential. And industrial, the least restrictive zone. How cumulative zoning would apply to a developer? Building a new house in R1 would be allowed. Opening a retail shop in R1 is not allowed because a retail shop is a lower commercial use, which is not permitted in the higher residential zones. But in cumulative zoning, there's a lot of mixed-use zoning districts, which is something we do not have. I mean, in general business, we do have business, but we also have a lot of residential and multifamily homes, apartment buildings. So it's mixed use. I mean, it's, switching general business to mixed use would be allowing a little bit more use and development to happen. I mean, right now, I can think of one right now is the Sunoco station over here at Hopley and Walnut Street. They, when zoning went through 25 years ago, it falls under being in residential zoning district. And without a change in zoning to come through council, they can't rebuild or redevelop the property. So they're kind of stuck with where they're at now. So they do need to resubmit their request for zoning change. But if we change it in ad hoc, then it would alleviate that step form. So that's, but that's, sorry. But that's what we're also looking in ad hoc.
So the zoning department would just permit it?
Yeah. Because it's an existing business.
Permitted use.
Right. And, but they're also pre-existing, I mean, they're in non-conforming existing use. If a gas station before zoning went in, they should be able to redevelop or, yeah, rebuild to update their facilities.
I agree.
Some of the, um, where was it at? Some of the safety hazards for cumulative housing is to having homes, schools and parks be built next to heavy industrial facilities. We only had one existing and that was the school across from GE, which we don't have no longer. So that was a, actually, that was an issue in Columbus because there was a lot of schools and community centers built around old factories, which a lot of that, that industry has moved out. So, I mean, I'm all for cumulative zoning to be added in, but it's just going to change all of our, our boundaries. So it's, I think it will improve development. So, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in the downtown business district I'd like to see changed. I'd like to see it expanded. But there's some stuff that I think, I mean, we are in a Euclidean zoning, which is very restrictive. So we're not in the 1960s anymore. You guys have any questions? Jim, do you have anything else? Was there anything, any other?
So does this committee want to leave it in ad hoc?
Yep.
We're all agreed? So be it. Open projects. I heard Vicki sigh.
Just wanted to touch base and just get some status reports. The land swap with Lutz Drive and Curse Better Road, the last time.
Did we hear back from Cole?
You, you have not heard back? No, you've not heard back, you say, from? Who did you say?
Cole Potts, I believe is the name.
Because I thought the mayor indicated that Mr. Potts was no longer with the park district and we had somebody new?
That would be news to me.
Because he mentioned it at a meeting. I'll double check on that. Okay. Alley vacation, Ethel Street. Didn't know what was going on there. On our open projects report, it says something about need signature from railroad.
Yeah. They were busy down in Florida with all the hurricanes and stuff.
Right.
Nobody had time to deal with us.
In the meantime, I got the property owner to get his stuff out of our right-of-way. So it's ready to go.
Getting a reply from the railroad, unless it affects them and their transport of freight, we'll never get a response on a piece of property that they have. Won't happen.
So I guess the question is, do we need their response?
Yes.
Okay. And so if what Mr. Keith is saying that probably never going to get a response, this alley vacation's never going to happen? Or can't happen until we get a response from the railroad?
Correct. Can't happen until we get a response from the railroad.
So it's not going to happen?
Excuse me. Go ahead.
So it's not going to happen?
If we vacate it, something will probably happen then. We'll get a team of lawyers in here, right, the railroad?
Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly what will happen.
Oh. Okay. Can we, can we not compel them to respond?
I don't think so.
Let me add this. If you guys have noticed in the news that Norfolk Southern has been recently purchased merger with Union Pacific Railroad, that my contact number for Jacksonville is no longer being answered. And engineering, I do believe for NS is now out in Kansas City.
Yeah.
So to get hold of anybody in NS for stuff, it's back to zero on who we contact. It's going to get worse, especially if CSX gets merged with the NS.
Well, I suppose I could start with the customer service line and see how persistent I am. If you'd like to hold me.
How about Sunoco Gas Station? They had requested for rezoning and renovation?
We need them to re-request, but the cumulative zoning would take care of that, correct?
Yes.
So?
I would like to leave it on there just for now, just for them.
So in other words, if we do the cumulative zoning, we don't need any?
We, we'll take it all.
Okay. Great. The annexation of the recycling center?
How are we on that?
We're working on it.
I know Mr. Fankhauser had sent an email to us with the recording of their 8/7/25, the county commissioners' recording of that meeting and it dealt with the annexation. I don't know, did you have an opportunity to listen to that?
I remember, it's on here, but I didn't listen to it. Did you?
Did I? Yes.
What was your submission?
Well, if I'm understanding, the county commissioners want to leave it alone because I believe their question is, what's the benefit?
For them.
If it doesn't benefit anybody, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Fankhauser, you, I'm assuming, listened to the audio?
Yes. Kurt Fankhauser, 1415 Michigan Drive. So the way our annexation, specifically surrounding the sewer and the water services are in our codified ordinance, you can get water and you don't have to do anything. Doesn't matter if you live in the city or not.
Right.
But when you get our sewer, we require the signing of a deed restriction. And this ordinance was passed back in 2018. And what that deed restriction says, it says, if you ever become contiguous to the city, your property automatically will get annexed. If they're already contiguous, then it happens at that time. If multiple parcels down the road later become and then yours is now touching, it automatically happens. You know, it could be 50 years, 100 years later. So my understanding, this slipped through the cracks and the administration did not do the deed restriction requirement before they hooked the sewer up at that property. That being said, we're at their mercy now, whether they agree to annex or not. The only recourse, and I don't know if this is even allowed, is because when Rod Ratliff was in, it was brought up about shutting people's sewers off. And Rod Ratliff said at the time, he thought because of EPA rules, you couldn't shut a sewer off once the sewer was turned on. I don't know. I haven't researched the legalities of that. I did speak with Mr. Tim Lay, County Commissioner Lay, at the gas station a week or two ago. And I said, hey, are you guys planning on annexing in? He just kind of shook his head, no. And to me, the sheriff's office is already annexed in. That property is directly beside it. Why wouldn't you annex in? I mean, if you, if, I mean, look at this scenario. You have a medical condition. Let's say you, you fall on the ice in the parking lot of the sheriff's office and need an ambulance. The Bucyrs ambulance comes out. With this recycling center building not being in the city limits, if somebody fell on the ice and needed an ambulance, they're waiting on an ambulance from Solfer Springs. So I don't understand why they wouldn't want to annex. I don't, it's, it's a county-owned building. It's not paying taxes for property anyway. I don't understand why they wouldn't want to be in. And to me, they would have advantages by being in because they could get the quicker response time on the ambulance. Plus, it's, it's, you don't have a hodgepodge of multiple county-owned properties all being in that same vicinity and you, you don't know which one's in and which one's not. So I don't know if the law director could research the thing out about shutting the sewer off.
I can look into that.
If that's even legally something we could even do because of the EPA. Does that kind of explain what's going on, Vicki?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, I have a question. And I just noticed it right, right before coming tonight. So I did some quick checking and we had our public hearing on August the 19th for the rezoning of the three lots that Aveda owns. But our committee never then discussed what came out of the public hearing. And we've never, at least I'm not finding, where we requested legislation for, amending the zoning district map to reflect those lots redesignations. And I mean, I, I double-checked because the next meeting or plating meeting would have been the 21st, 18, 19, yeah, 2021. I listened to the audio recording. We had nothing on our agenda. There was nothing in the audio recording where we talked about that. And this would be our second plating meeting after that public hearing meeting.
So it says after the public hearing, the proposed amendment must receive three-quarters approval of full council.
Right. But it, but it comes back to the committee.
That didn't happen?
Would you have to talk about it more?
No. No. And then my next question is, and I'll do this as a law director, is I know an email was sent out to all council members telling us about the Aveda groundbreaking event. And we're invited to the Bucyrs Orthopedic Center groundbreaking on Tuesday, September 23rd, '25. And I guess my question is, does this groundbreaking, does this legislation need to be approved before this groundbreaking stuff?
That's just a ceremony. Ground starts getting moved next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
So then, my question?
This is a holding up construction.
Okay, wonderful. But we still have to address this.
It still needs to be addressed.
My concern was if this was going to affect them doing any ground then we needed to be looking at some.
But it should be done as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So, and to add to that, the new street is priority for Schaefer excavating. They're going to start, they're going to build the new road first before they start the site work for the parking lot and the new building. Because all the, all the ground they're taking out for the, cut for the new street is for the, the raise the base up for the parking lot.
So I guess with that being said, I'd like to make a motion. Okay. The legislation draft that was presented to the planning commission and then also at the public hearing was not an emergency piece. So, Mr. Keith, you're indicating that it would be well to get this done as soon as possible?
Yes.
Does it need to be an emergency?
Yeah.
We can make that here, right?
Okay. And that's, I, I believe that's correct, that we can, when I make my motion, I can then state that I want this piece of legislation to be an emergency?
Correct.
Okay. So I hereby move that we request the law director to prepare emergency legislation for amending the official zoning district map to rezone permanent parcel numbers. And I'm not going to go through reading all those numbers. From the urban residential district, R3, to general business district, GB. And this has to do with the Aveda property. I think that's all I need to say.
As an emergency?
Yeah, I did say as an emergency. Yeah.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Clarissa?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
No, yes.
So we'll have this for our next council meeting. Correct? Thank you. And then last, I just have, I think, oh, I don't think I know. We can remove from our open projects the paving of State Route 19. That was referred to our committee on July 29th, '25. And Resolution 226, 2025 was passed as an emergency on August the 7th. So that can come off our open projects list. So that can come off our open projects list. And I will say, if you look at your latest open projects list that you were provided or that we all were provided by former clerk wise, you won't see this paving of State Route 19 because we've had referrals made, you know, after she's, you know, left her position. But when a referral's made, I take my sheet and write the referrals on it. I just, I just don't want you to go and look and think, well, it's not on there. Well, it's not printed on there, but it was referred, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Vicki. Erin, anything?
No.
Clarissa? Public participation?
Kevin Myers, 421 West Oakland, I have two questions for Mike, and I thought I'd better come up and ask him here, that way the public might also have these same questions. On the encroachment agreement, when they, they're gonna pave over top of our utilities, correct?
Yes.
If those utilities need to be accessed, who pays to repair the pavement, us or
That would be spelled out in the agreement.
Okay, and?
I, I can't answer that question. That'd be a question for Dylan White and Devin Kiefer on that.
Okay. Could you check on that and let me know? And then on the cumulative zoning, I know you've mentioned it, why you're in favor of, and I understand all that. Can you, is there any type of an example you could offer where it may have backfired on a community that moved to that type of zoning? Is there anything that could potentially go wrong with that for us? Like, is there any hidden reasons why we should be cautious, and I guess is what I'm
Some of the, the mixing of incompatible land uses can create direct conflicts between neighbors and differing needs and expectations. Loss of production protections for industry, lack of economic and land use stability. It would reduce industrial space if developers find it more profitable to build residential properties or shopping malls in an industrial zone. Prime example of that is the Steel Yard, Walmart, and Home Depot in Cleveland at the old U.S. Steel site. They kind of regret, Cleveland clubs kind of regret selling that property off. But it also, and depressed property values. If a commercial or residential development is located in a predominantly industrial area, the value of that property may be negatively affected due to the lower demand for residential properties in that zone.
Here in town, though, do you see any issues that could arise from it?
Not offhand, just generally, generally right now.
And it still will be a permitted use, and anything that would go in, right?
Yeah.
So if you looked at it carefully, I'm pretty sure.
Then my last question is for the law director, and I don't expect an answer now, but more of a, a thought. If the, talking about the annexation of that property, if it was already in our codified ordinances that when they were connected to sewer, or to connect to the sewer, that they would be made to annex, isn't there anything legally that could be done to say, hey, this was our law, you need to adhere to it? Thank you.
That's the question. I don't think so.
Just my observation on this situation. I do believe it was mentioned that this was brought up when the new administration came into office last year. It was brought up to the county commissioners when this was in development. This was also brought up to the county commissioners when they started construction on this site, and through the whole course of construction, about the need for the annexation process to be gone through. So, I'm not sure where somebody would come up that the administration has dropped the ball on it, but from what I've viewed, they haven't.
I'm just speaking my opinion, and I'm sure I'll probably get in trouble for it. Any more public participation? Meeting adjourned at?
6:34.
6:34.
Public Lands and Buildings, September 4th, 2025.
Calling Public Lands and Buildings to order at 6:35 PM. Members present are Christopher Maritz, Clarissa Scheffler Slater.
Me.
Mr. Spiegel, Terry Spiegel, listed again, and myself, Seer and Chair. First up, we have public participation. All right, seeing none, do we have anything on the open projects list that we need to speak about tonight?
I do not.
I don't either.
Okay, seeing none, do we have any more public participation?
Write that off, 210 Ethel Street. Is anyone from Public Lands and Buildings attending any of the Park District meetings that they have, to where we would know who's in charge of the Park District?
Actually, I have no who's to who was put on the?
It was, it was Carolyn.
Well, no.
I thought someone took her place.
Carolyn was taken off a long time ago, and?
It was Zion and Carolyn.
And Zion was placed on. When Zion was removed?
What Carolyn was removed?
Well, Carolyn was removed previously, but when, like, way before, because she hadn't been attending. And then Zion left, and?
I thought someone was appointed to take his place after he resigned, I can't remember who it was.
I think that they were asking Mr. Spiegel to take over all of Zion's, but he did, but she didn't get a list of everything Zion was in.
No, I did not.
Mr. Finkhauser, to bug you at this point, at this point in time, I am no longer driving the bus, if you would like to place me back on, if that's easier for Mr. Spiegel, or?
I know they have meetings at like 10 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Is that something you can make it to?
Yeah, I can at this point, but it's?
Because then we would know who's in charge of the?
It's one of those, but it's all up to Mr. Finkhauser to do.
As far as the land swap thing goes, maybe you, somebody would know where we're going
I believe after Mr. Hickman stepped down and Mr. Spiegel got on, at one meeting, we did make a motion and a vote to automatically put Mr. Spiegel on every committee that?
The problem is, is he never got a list.
He never got a list of it.
So.
Whether, whether we had the list in front of us or not, I think he is on it.
Are you, are you open for Thursday? I forgave him what Thursday, it's one Thursday every month at 7:00 AM.
I can't.
Through the window, okay.
Sure, I can do it.
All right, so we just need to make sure that we get the information as to what Thursday that is.
Yep.
I do have something that I should have brought up. I was driving around town, I drive down, I just forgot, where's, what's the road the soccer fields are on? I drive it every day.
Lane Street.
Thank you, I drive it literally every day. I was driving down there, and I was remembering the conversation about the community gardens that Joe Graham came up here for. And I remember the outline of the property that he was suggesting, and they're gonna do like lifted boxes or something like that, where it's gonna create like an actual community garden space. But I was out there, and I realized that the, the property east of that, so further back towards the tracks, the city's been just mowing it, and it looks like maybe they got tired and did it. Yeah, that's fine, yeah, if you can just, I appreciate it, thank you. I actually messaged Ray about it, so. It's kind of hard to see, they're wanting this property right here, this would be the northwest here, so I'm thinking more of this property, this is all city property here, and see if they just leave it a meadow. I had mentioned to Ray, and I hadn't seen Tommy or Bruce, but that back area, I'm wondering if we even had some sort of like, I forget what it's called, like native plants and even like native fruit-bearing fauna? And make a trail, instead of them having to mow that entire thing, they would just have to mow the trail, and you could put bushes or like trees back there or something. It'd kind of go hand in hand with that community garden. And it'd also give kids in town the opportunity to walk through a space like that, since Unger's not exactly the most accessible. But, I just thought of a utili, utilization of a space that we can't do anything otherwise with. But I'm gonna talk to Tommy and Bruce later, or the Trails Committee, but I just wanted to put it on the record, I guess.
Like Clarissa said, me and Clarissa spoke, was it last week sometime or another? I went down and looked at it after you talked to me, and the very back part, I think, Chris, if you look at that dark brown area, it's, it's like waist-high weeds right now and grass, and I think it would be a perfect place for what Clarissa's suggesting. Just like a bush hog trail through there, and the rest of it wildflowers, basically, like native Ohio wildflowers. That could be a great idea. During soccer games and everything, some of the kids can go over there and walk through the trails and everything, so. The front part of that is parking mostly for soccer, so. But like you said, we need to get ahold of Bruce and Tommy, which it'd be kind of hard
I think the OSU extension has a lot of resources for that, too. I know they've provided like seeds before to, I think, just citizens if they wanted to plan it, so I don't think it'd be hard to get resources to do that.
I actually talked to Josh Dyer, right before you called me, about a different project I was thinking about, and he actually gave me some pointers and some ideas about the wildflower thing. They have actually a wildflower little meadow over at the BNO Trail in Lexington. So I called Josh, and we talked about it a little bit, so, kind of got a little head start on it.
I don't know if council has to do anything with that, though. It's the administration. That's all I got.
Do we have any other public participation? Seeing none, I'll adjourn at 6:42 PM.
Health and Safety Committee, September 4th, 2025.
I call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at 6:44 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Seer and Chair, James Mead, and myself, Vicki DeShawn as Chair. Before we start, I just want to make a comment about our agenda. Kurt, when I sent to you my agenda for tonight's meeting, you've changed it. May I ask why you added to my agenda?
Kurt Finkhauser, 1415 Michigan Drive. Are you referring to the e-bikes and the non-traditional motorized?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I, in my last minute preparation of the agenda, I was scrambling to prepare it, and I, the very last thing I did was I went off the referral list from the meeting on Tuesday night, two nights ago, and I actually played back the video where Mr. Myers, at the end of the videos, recited all the referrals, and I, I just instinctively took everything that Mr. Myers said, and I made sure that it was on the agenda. I didn't intentionally do that to upset you or anything. I guess looking back now, I do remember you sent me an email, and it specifically did not have the e-bikes and the non-traditional motorized vehicles on it, and I, in no way, Vicki, put that on there to try to force it to be discussed or not or anything, it was just a simple oversight, and I'm sorry.
And the reason I did not have it on the agenda was because when Mr. Myers referred the e-bikes, and I have our YouTube transcription here, he states, "I do know that there are some state-level laws regarding the e-bikes, but I'd like to refer them to Health and Safety so that we could take a look at them. I don't feel any action needs taken, you know, immediately this week. But that way, it's referred into the committee and we can start looking at it." So that's why I did not put it on there. It was referred, but as Mr. Myers mentioned, it's not something that we needed to be looking at this week. So I just want the public to know that, as far as I'm concerned, the committee themselves, and, and Mrs. Slater also then later, I believe in relation to the e-bikes, then made a referral on the non-traditional motorized vehicles. And I just lumped that with the e-bikes and Mr. Myers' comment, and felt, you know, this week, we weren't gonna be worrying about those. So I just want the public to know that the committee ourselves, we're not gonna be talking about the e-bikes or the non-traditional motorized vehicles. Now, if the public wishes to come up during public participation and talk, that's fine, but the committee themselves, we're not going to be entertaining any talk right now because we haven't had an opportunity to even check into any of this, so.
But I, I, once again, I just want to say I did not do that to intentionally upset you or anything, it was just pure oversight. It's been kind of like a scrambling thing here, trying to get all these agendas and notices sent out. I, I wanted to make, I thought it's better to have more on there instead of maybe missing something, so that's why.
But, and, and that's fine, it's just, you know, you had sent me an email and asked for what I wanted on the agenda, and I replied. And then when I get the packet, and it's like, well, okay, there's more things on here than what I asked for, so.
Now that you've pointed that out, I do remember that.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, to your point on the e-bikes and non-traditional motor vehicles. I did a lot of reading today, I met with the police chief, and there's a lot more time we're gonna have to put into learning before we're ready to start discussing. Just like you said, you want the public to know. I don't just want to say, oh, well, we have to look at this later. I spent a considerable amount of time already, and there's just, it's overwhelming how much. And to be able to tell the difference between the Class 1, the Class 2, and the Class 3 and all that stuff, good lord. It's gonna, it's gonna be a task.
And I will make a note that when, you know, like if Kevin gives me a holler or something and says, hey, I think, you know, we can be ready to talk about it, I'll make sure that it is specifically identified on the agenda, that we don't leave it under open projects, and then we just say, is, are there any open projects? And then I say, oh, let's talk about e-bikes. Make it known, so the public will know.
I did have a conversation with Robert Taylor about it, though, and I do agree with his point that the sidewalks need to be dealt with more appropriately. And we already do have it in ordinance that you can't ride any type of a bicycle on the sidewalks downtown. And I'm sure I'm not the only person who walked out of a business door and darn near been clipped by somebody zooming by on a bicycle. And so I think we also need to make sure that the laws we already have in the books are, are known and able to be better enforced.
Thank you. Okay, next, public participation. Anybody that wants to talk to the committee? Come to the podium and state your name and your residential address.
Robert Taylor, 411 Plymouth Street. And I know this is not on your agenda, but since we're talking about it. I looked at it, too, and the state does regulate all three classes. But they do leave it open for the cities to where they're allowed to be ridden, whether it's a bike path, a trail, et cetera, et cetera. But the, the sidewalks are the main issue, and I know we were protecting the business owners, and I know the law's only as good as if people are gonna abide by them. But I don't want to be the guy that has someone smashing the side of my glass van with glass on it at 40 mile an hour while I'm pulling into my driveway, because it's almost happened. I, this is, we, something does need to happen there, and again, I, we can't rush it, we don't want to be violating people's rights, we've got enough people crying about shit like that as it is, and I'm one of them. And, you know, people tend to stretch things and say, oh, well, you're, you're a little tyrant, you're this, you're that. Look, if there's anyone in this community that's against regulation from government, it's me. But we, we definitely need to look at protecting the citizens who are just going about their normal daily business from people who are, who don't care about the laws and?
Well, and I think? Well, and I think what regulations we may either consider or enact or whatever, I think we're really looking to protect people. The chief and I had an interesting conversation about it today. I'm going to, he and I agree that a majority of these people that are riding these, no liability insurance.
Absolutely, and that's a problem.
And that's going to fall back on those of us that are motorized vehicles.
Correct. Thank you.
Rate that off 210 Ethel Street. Quick comment and then a question. Yeah, just yesterday, I was running through Oakwood Cemetery, and there was a young girl, probably about 12, just hauling down Southern Avenue on the sidewalk on a minibike. So my question is, is there an update on the Swan Building with the facade falling off? Do we have an update on that, Mr. Gobrik?
My understanding is that the summons has not been served to the owner yet.
Has not been served?
That is my understanding.
Is there a reason why or? No?
Right.
I don't know, that's not my department.
Is that this? 420 East Mansfield Street?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's, that's under the Public Lands and Buildings, Ray. This is Health and Safety.
Okay.
But it does affect people's safety.
It's not really, I was thinking-
Oh, it was on ours?
I mean, that was one of the things that they were worried about, was Health and Safety. I don't know if that got added. I thought I didn't refer to those, but I could do.
Either way, it's, summons hasn't been served, so, okay.
It just depends on how, whether or not they signed for it, or if they can have personal service. Nothing's happened so far to be able to get our proof of service.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Greg Y, 1125 Hillcrest Drive.
Yes, I wish somebody from the police department would come out to our neighborhood out there on Southern Avenue and get these people. Not just the ones on the e-bikes or the minibikes that are tearing up going through people's yards, but as Terry agrees with me, too, 100% I hope, stop these people on these golf carts that got kids that are hanging on the back of them going down my street. Okay? These kids, if that's a licensed motor vehicle issued and inspected by the City of Bussers Police Department, and they go out and get tags on it that's a motorized vehicle licensed in the state of Ohio, those kids need to be in car seats by the law. They're not. They're hanging all over the back, they're facing backwards. People are going down there at 90 miles an hour on those stupid things. Now, I don't know if Terry saw the new one, but it's a 12-seater. Someone now has a 12-seater going down that street at Mach 1. This is ridiculous. That's a residential street, and people like to walk their dogs, take their kids down that street because it's a direct pathway to the park. But until we get enforcement of this stuff, that's where it needs to start first.
In my conversation with the police chief this morning, I think you're going to see that starting to happen. We discussed a lot of the stuff in that particular neighborhood in that conversation.
Yeah, it's just getting out of hand down there. Thank you.
Kurt Fankhauser, 1415 Michigan Drive. This Norfolk and Southern legislation that is in the packet, it's my understanding there's an issue with the ampersand sign between the words Norfolk and Southern. Is that true? Is there?
I had sent an email to Mr. Gobrik when I was given a copy of the draft. I had some edit changes, and one of them had to do with that the legislation refers to Norfolk and Southern Railroad, and that's what was previously recited in ordinance number 22-2012, which was given by me to Mr. Gobrik to use as a sample piece of legislation. And so I just questioned in my email if it should state Norfolk and Southern Railroad, or should it state Norfolk Southern? Because that's my understanding, that's what its proper name is. But then I just heard it's been-
It hasn't gone all the way through federal regulation yet, so the sale could potentially take two years.
Oh, okay.
But you're correct there. I just verified it is Norfolk Southern. But I think the reason we use the word and all the time is because it was the Baltimore and Ohio that merged with the Southern to become Norfolk Southern. And I distinctly kind of remember at one time, I think they did call it Norfolk and Southern initially.
Norfolk and Southern.
That's what it was. And then, you're right.
And then, along with that suggested edit or question, I also ask about East Mansfield Street Underpass on the documentation supplied to us by Service Safety Director Starner. That shows that that's been deleted. And so that does not need to appear. I did confirm that with the Service Safety Director this morning, that that does not need to appear there. But I, you know, was just, I put that in.
So those edits have been made, and I sent them to Lisa. I didn't get them done by noon, so I didn't think you wanted it, so I just sent it on to Lisa.
Okay. But Lisa didn't, usually she sends those on to me then, and I didn't get anything from her. So, okay, so Lisa has. So you've changed your draft to read Norfolk Southern Railroad? I mean, there, it's just Norfolk Southern, but-
I was going to say, I didn't add railroad. I just had it say Norfolk Southern.
Yes, that's what I had in there. Or, yeah, Norfolk, Norfolk Southern, which is the proper name, so you're fine with Norfolk Southern in place of Norfolk and Southern Railroad?
Yes, I think everybody's going to know what it means.
Well, right before that, it says lighting up rail-
Railway, yep. And then you say you've also deleted the East Mansfield Street Underpass, reference to that. And then also, under Section 2, you changed that to read?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess my point I wanted to bring up with that, I think whether the ampersand sign was in there or not, I think that 100% of the population would have read the ordinance either way and knew exactly what company was being talked about. And I'd like to get to where we're not, we're not like microing this legislation all the time and holding things up, because there's other cities that I guarantee you are probably passing similar legislation, and they have the ampersand sign in there, and nobody's making a big deal about it. So I think the, what I'm saying is, let's, you know, for the sake of the next council coming in, if we could just, you know, things that like generally are accepted to be like common sense, let's not harp on them and make them an issue.
And if I may say something, Kurt, had that been the only thing, I wouldn't have said anything, but that's not the only edit that needed to be made. We needed to take out East Mansfield Street Underpass. That had to be stricken. So, and just like, you know, I know everyone says, you know, Vicki, cross her Ts and dot her Is. I mean, I haven't made that suggestion for who knows how long, but anyhow.
Vicki, if I may, I'm sorry, if you know something's wrong, you correct it. It's one thing for it to slip through, it's a whole nother to see it and know it's wrong. And when there's multiple things wrong, there's no reason to leave one thing wrong.
Well, the other thing that made me think of this was, there was an issue back when we did annexation at Mr. Gerner's house, and Vicki, if it was, if I remember correctly, you had issue with the wording not having Mr. Gerner's wife's name on it, too. And I think if anybody would have looked at it, and it had just Brian Gerner's name on it, it's not going to change the end result, is what I'm saying. So like, and I understand, this Mansfield Street Underpass is on this one, and I'm fine with it getting changed, but like, for the sake of the city and everybody in it, let's just kind of tone down the everything.
As long as I am on this council, I will continue to do what I feel is correct, and I'm sorry that you feel that I'm micromanaging and, but again, just think, Kurt, a few more months, you won't have to deal with me.
Vicki, you're doing a fine job. Can we move forward?
I agree.
Okay, any other public participation?
This is more of a public service announcement. Yesterday, we had a tree limb fall on North Spring Street, barely missing some assignments and construction trucks that were doing Omni Fiber work for their construction. Just, everybody, take a look at your trees in your front yard. If you notice anything, if you see holes in the main trunks, no, no leaves on any trunks or limbs, give us a call. Have somebody come out and see if the limb is dead or the tree needs to be taken down. Just a reminder, trees in the tree lawn are the property owner's responsibility, but for them to be removed, they still need to be approved by the Safety Service Director, and they, there's a form to fill out for that. Also, while I'm talking about Omni Fiber, we've gotten a lot of phone calls about potholing in the yards. They're doing that so they aren't hitting the service lines. We also had a gas, a 2-inch gas line hit Friday afternoon, or Friday morning. They thought they were clear going under it. When they were pulling back, they nicked it. It was also in the same area where the tree limb fell today. So just to let you know, if you see something that doesn't look right, give my office a call. And regarding to the utilities, and also, there's also a lot of plates in the road because of the potholing. So I think that's all I needed to say about Omni Fiber. But they're all over, right now, they're working on three diff, no. They're working on FO8, FO5, F12, and F13 contracts. Simonson is doing all the work. Previous contractor is gone because they made a lot of errors, so.
Nobody knows where they're very at.
Not yet. Not yet. So I know they probably hit a lot of stuff, and we're going to find out here in a couple weeks.
Thank you. Any other public participation?
In regarding to e-bikes, you all know the condition of the sidewalks in town. Downtown probably has the best sidewalks in the whole city. Just, if you go down parts of East Rensselaer and East, most of the other sidewalks in town, I would not want to ride a bike down them.
We call those ramps, sir.
Ramps, yes, yes. So, I mean, if somebody's going to take a chance to ride an e-bike down those, good luck to them. They can just call the squad now. But, yeah, I would not recommend them going down the sidewalks. I really don't want them down downtown either. Somebody's going to walk out of a business.
That's already on our law books.
Yeah.
411, Robert Taylor, 411 Plymouth Street. And this is obviously no one's fault in here, but I just want to point out how absurd it is, the conversation about the sidewalks and the trees, and how it's always the property owner's responsibility, and the city planted the trees. That's why the sidewalks are messed up. The city's planted the trees that the limbs are falling off of. That's why, a few years ago, when Mayor Reeser was doing his tree project, I didn't want a tree in my tree lawn, I didn't get one. And I don't know if this government at all, from here or any point on, can ever change that, but if we can, it would be nice to lay the responsibility of the maintenance of that stuff on the people responsible for putting them there, and that was the city. It's just not fair to the property owners.
You were actually very fortunate, because a lot of people live on some government involved.
Any other public participation? Okay, next on the agenda, the Norfolk Southern single signal rates. We've already had our discussion on that, and the committee is in approval of your draft, so that'll be presented for the next, or at the next council meeting for consideration. Okay, open projects.
I've got two to discuss. On the, one about the food vendors licensing, I met with the fire chief, as I said I would. His comments to me were he had forwarded everything to Mr. Gobrik some time ago, and he's just waiting, I think, for him to finalize, put something together. He did forward me, and I did subsequently forward it to you, Vicki. The thing, I think it was from Fremont, Ohio, Fostoria wanted to, that he wanted to follow a similar suit, too. His biggest question that he had in our conversation was, do we need to, because they can do whatever inspection program they wish to do, he was curious if we needed to legislate him to have the ability to charge a set fee, and he would like to make it a $100 fee. My reply back to him was, if we do have to legislate the ability for him to charge a fee, I don't want to set it in stone at $100. I just want to say that the fire chief may charge a fee, because if in two years he wants to increase that to 100 and a quarter, why do we have to pass more legislation and pay to print more legislation for that? So that was my only thing. So I don't know, Mr. Gobrik, if you have an answer yet on that, if we have to legislate his ability to charge a fee or not.
Did you have a date for that email?
No.
Because I don't have.
His words were some time ago, but I can-
A date for what?
For when he sent everything to Mr. Gobrik.
Did he send it to the right email address?
I don't know. But I would be happy to forward you what he sent to me.
That would be great.
And then maybe one of the two of us can tell him if he has any other questions or concerns to holler at you.
Perfect. And I will pass on to the committee, when Kevin mentioned that he forwarded it to me, what Chief Schwemle emailed to him. Our committee already had that documentation. We've had it, let's see, the MFU 2025 Info Packet, we've had that since March 20th of this year. And the other to do with the Fostoria ordinance, we have all had that since July the 8th of '24. So I just didn't want you to think, well, why didn't Vicki forward on the email that Kevin did? Well, we've had all that information.
Right, I just was sending what he sent me.
Yes, I appreciate that.
So, yeah, that's my only concern, is, you know, I'm happy to let them do their thing. I just really think that for him to be able to charge that fee, we just really need to know, what, if anything, do we need to do to allow him to do it? And I would be in favor of not setting it in writing of what that dollar amount is in case he needs to increase it later.
Committee thoughts on that?
I'm with Kevin on that one. We did that for something else, didn't we?
So am I, but would there ever be a fear of charging one vendor one price and another vendor another?
No, I think that he could establish that in his policies and procedures.
And when would he inspect them? Would he, after they're set up, he would go down through there?
No, this is a little different. What happens is, and what they're doing up in northwest Ohio, and- What happens is, and what they're doing up in Northwest Ohio, and Mr. White, feel free to jump in if I miss any points here, but essentially at the start of the fair and festival season, these mobile food vendors go to a location that's already been set up and they do their fire inspections, they do their health department inspections. And to operate in the state of Ohio, you have to have a health department inspection. Doesn't have to be in the county that you're domiciled in. If I owned a food truck and I just, for craps and giggles, I wanted to drive to Steubenville, Ohio to have it inspected, I could.
So we honor other.
Absolutely. Yeah, any county can inspect it. Any, any county health department can inspect it. And so what he's looking to do is something similar to what they're doing up in Northwest Ohio is have an event where the health department can do the health inspection, we can do the safety inspection, all in one kit kaboodle, boom, you're marked off and you're good to go for that entire year anywhere in the state of Ohio.
Greg, 11125 Hillcrest Drive. Basically, they start in March. They do an annual thing up there. They have different dates, every food vendor, from Wood, Lucas.
Ottawa.
Ottawa, and they're at another county.
There's four or five counties, yeah.
Yeah, Lu, Lake. So they do an annual inspection. They have a huge indoor facility, it's very nice, and they bring them in by numbers and it's just like African assembly line. It's unbelievable how they get this many people together on these given dates.
How much do they charge?
I forget what the fee is because they consider different food vendors because, let's say that you just sell pop and Gatorade, that's a different classification.
Yeah, if there's grease laden vapors with the sauce.
And then if you do grease, or you do a generator, or you're doing propane, there's, there's different inspection format that each one of those vehicles have to have for fire. Health inspection is basically whatever the county has up there for their inspections. Now Crawford County can accept anybody else's inspection, however, they have a right, if they so want to, to do an inspection. And they can do an inspection at any time, at any given place, including every day of the festival.
And to his point, they're two different things. I think because, we talked about the festival a lot, during the festival, the fire department, regardless of whether they've already been checked by us or any other fire department, they're gonna come and inspect every stand looking for certain things. The health department is gonna come to every stand regardless of when, part of what the health department's looking for, have you already got your health license? If not, you're shut down. But they're gonna look again, just because you passed your health inspection in March or April or May, doesn't mean in August that if they say you're holding temperature of your chicken legs is, is too far off, they're shutting you down. So what's happening during the festival is actually not part of what we're talking about here today.
No. Basically, the fire department has to, service fire department has to inspect by state fire code, okay? Because they have adopted, the city of SARS has adopted the high fire code. So they have the jurisdiction authority, that's called juridur, to inspect every vehicle coming into their municipality or jurisdiction of authority, okay? So if that vehicle comes in, they have to inspect it. Failure to inspect it or making a report of it, because every report has to go to the state fire marshal's office inspection bureau. There's a, there's a system that has to be entered into, like every fire report, everything else, all has to be documented.
There's a minimum set of standards that, that would happen during an inspection of the festival, and there's other municipalities that do go above and beyond that. And I'll, just as an example, one of our vendors that comes to the virus festival is fine here. He got booted out of the North Ridgeville Corn Festival because that fire chief says, well, no, if you're cooking and you have a tent instead of a trailer, you need to be 50 feet away from anybody else.
Well, actually, you're not supposed to be cooking under a tent.
Right.
That's in the code. You can't cook under a tent.
To be that big size, not to have an open fire.
Yeah, he wanted his open cooking 50 feet away, not five feet away.
Like I said, Jim, there's different aspects of the, of the code.
Depending on what you're doing.
Depending on what you have. And then, and the basic thing is, is that most of them have to have, if you've got oil, you're cooking with oil, you have to have a certified K fire extinguisher, just like any other restaurant would have one. And then you have to have the other one too. So you basically have to have two fire extinguishers readily available, and plus all the other stuff that's listed in the high fire code, which I know Vicki has a copy of all that because I gave that to you guys in March. So those are the parameters set up by the state fire marshal's office, by state statute that those, those, these rules and regulations have to be followed.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So I think, my hope and desire is that we can get all these questions answered by our next committee meeting where we could then request a final piece of legislation, really finalizing that the Ohio Fire Code is, is part of this and that the fire chief has the ability to set his fees and all that. If, if we can find that that's acceptable to do it that way and not put enough, because like Mr. White said, I think having a chart of, well, if you're cook, if, if you're doing this type of work, it's this price if you're doing, because it's how much more inspection needs done, so I think that's fair.
If I remember correctly, on our last health and safety committee meeting, Mr. Goldberg, you had mentioned that you did have the draft ready for Chapter 709, our temporary business or food trucks. But as I indicated, I thought maybe if we just take a few things at a time, you know, when you write a list of 10 things to do and you look at that list of 10 and it's like, ugh, but if maybe I just give you three things, and that's, you know, what I did at the last meeting. So, I mean, you already said you had a draft already, ready?
Correct.
So now you have some additions to add to that draft.
Okay.
Um, did you have any more to say on the food truck?
No.
Okay. So I guess the question is, do you think that you'll be able to have that draft to us, well, you should be able to have it at the next committee meeting, since you already have the draft itself ready, other than adding in these couple? Okay?
Yeah, that works.
All right, next.
Is there something to send you what I have? So you can look over it and then do the additions and then send it over to me?
That's great. That, yeah, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Perfect.
If, if, well, here, let's do this then, excuse me. If you want to just send your draft to all the committee members, then you're sending it to us, because you know, we gotta, we have to be careful. If you send it to me and then I turn around and send it to all you people, if someone can come along and say, you know, there's a, I mean, I'm really just sending it for info, but let's just do that. Send it to all the committee members, if you would please.
I can do that.
Okay, Chapter 381, taxi cab licensing. The draft that you were gonna get to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some things came up. You'll all be getting a letter soon enough.
So with the taxi cab licensing, you can be getting that emailed also to all committee members?
Yeah, I can email that right now.
Okay, wonderful. Great. So taxi cab, same thing with peddlers and solicitors. That was another one you were gonna email. Um, and as you indicated, we haven't received yet. So if you could email that draft as well to all the committee members? Thank you. Property Maintenance Appeals Board. The last meeting, it was discussed that there would be checking with the Property Maintenance Appeals Board Secretary Alyssa, to have her check with.
I believe she's waiting on a callback.
Okay. Mr. McCarthy to see if he was willing to continue on as an alternate?
My understanding is that it has been, like, she's aware of it, that he's been reached out to, she's waiting on a return.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Okay, deaf children signage.
Yes, I don't believe that that's something we can do.
As far as the two questions that Mr. Myers had posed and you were gonna check into it?
Don't think we can do that. I can have a more in-depth conversation with Mike about that. But my reading of the manual and my reading of the law is that if it's not manual, then it's not a standardized sign, and if you put a standard, and if you put any sign that's not in the manual within viewing, like, eye shot of the road, it's a crime.
Okay.
Does that sound right, Mike?
Yep.
Perfect.
Only because it just popped into my head, how are we getting away with all these, like, this church down two blocks this way?
The no children at play sign was retired in ODOT, from ODOT's manual, I do believe in 2013, because I remember going around when I worked for a different county and removing, I wanna say, I think removed, like, 40 signs throughout here in county. So that, and there was also another one, I don't remember which sign it was, but um, yeah, if it is not in the Ohio Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, it will not be out on the public highway system. I mean, that was retired, and then officially, I don't remember what year, but the Amish buggy symbol is everywhere.
You should see this manual, it's like a thousand pages.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't doubt it.
It's thick. So, what's the other, there's some other question, I think?
Well, my question was, when he said it's a crime to put it within the right of way, why do we have all these signs that say this church that way or this business that way?
Yeah, there are quite a few church signs in, in the right of way that need to be removed. They have been there forever.
Right.
So that's.
Saying if we can't protect the health and, and safety of a.
Right.
A deaf child, then.
Right. And some of those, and some of those signs are also a, a psych distance issue. I can think of two right on Wetstone.
To that comment on the psych distance, Mr. Stoker had brought up a question about the railroad signs. Were you familiar with his question?
Yeah, I'm familiar with the sign that's out over in his, on his street.
So you're dealing with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So what does this all mean then, as far as there can be no signage put up?
I'm sorry, what was that?
You know, there was a citizen that had contacted the mayor about having a sign put up, you know, deaf children at play signage. So am I gathering that it's not possible?
Correct. I guess we can remove that from our list.
Okay. I'll get with, if it's okay with the committee, I'll get with the mayor, let him know what transpired tonight so that he can reach out to this individual and.
Perfect. Mr. Thidoff has a question or comment on this topic?
Well, let's see, Ray. Sure.
We're talking about the signage being illegal. What about the, like, the fluorescent, inexpensive plastic children at play that belong to the private citizen? Are those able to be put up in the right of way?
No.
No?
I was gonna say.
No, they're not allowed to be in the right of way.
Well, I mean, rephrase, not right of way, like, front yards, sidewalk, I don't mean out in the street or anything like that.
As long as it's on the house side of the sidewalk.
Tree lawn?
No.
Really?
Yeah, that's in the public right of way.
How do you determine what the right of ways when there isn't a sidewalk? Is it very based on the size of the street or anything?
It varies, he went through that whole thing for the sign.
It's usually like 10 feet back.
It's just curiosity, I mean.
Oh, wait till you're done.
I think I'm done. I'll stay up here though. Sure, because a lot of these plastic, a lot of these.
A lot of explanations.
A lot of these signs are made to put out so passing vehicles can see them. Obviously, you're not gonna put them up on your front porch.
Right.
Where children aren't playing, you're gonna want them so they're visible from the streets. So you're saying out by the curb is illegal?
Like, like we've said, any sign that is not in the Ohio Manual for Traffic Control Devices can be removed. Any signs that aren't there, it's illegal to have signs in similar shape and verbiage to official road signs. Say if you have, for instance, I have not seen it here, but I've seen it in Erie County, people putting signs up that says no parking zone in their front yard, so nobody parks in the parking spaces in front of their house. City made them remove them, because it's illegal to use that type of sign. So, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's a gray area. Whatever that's not in there, you can't, you can't put up. In regard to the right of way, most right of ways are within a foot of the back of sidewalk. Say for instance, Resonlier is a 50-foot right of way. Some parts of it is, when you get all the way out on the east end, I do believe there is a block that is only 45, or no, 49 and a half, and then it jumps up to 50 the next block. It's only 49 and a half feet, because that's two, two rods, or three rods. Each rod is 16 and a half feet. That's just a surveying term back in the 1800s. So you have street right of ways from 12 and a half to 15, 16 and a half feet for alleys. You have some streets that are 35, 33, 40, 45, 49 and a half, 40, 50, 55 and a half. Some parts of East Resonlier is 57.75 feet wide. I have no idea how that came up. Don't know. But then you also have 60, 66, 70, parts of Mansfield Street are 80 and 90. So if you wanna know what the street right of way with is, come up to my office, I have the old index. So it's, I mean, it's, Simonson wasn't sure where a right of way was for Omni Fiber the other day. I found the pins, only because I did a mortgage survey there a year and a half ago. So it's kinda hard to say, but in town, on most of the streets, it's within a foot of the back of sidewalk on the house side. If you have a street where you have no sidewalk, like up on the north side.
Hillcrest Drive.
Well, Hillcrest is easy, that's 50, 50-foot right of way, I do believe. But like parts of Dudley, where there's no sidewalk on parts of it, I do believe that's only a 50-foot right of way. So you have 20-foot of pavement, so you split it, so you figure you got about 15 feet from the edge of pavement out. So that's best way to approximate it. So it's easy, easy explanation I give to you, without giving you the whole surveying book.
Robert Taylor, 411 Plymouth Street. I just, you mentioned the comparison between not being able to put up a new sign for children at play and things, and just the reference to the church signs. Who, who enforces that? Is that the state? I understand that. Is that, is it at our discretion, or is the state saying you have to? What are they gonna do if you don't? Is my, because what, do we really wanna be doing that to church signs that have?
I wasn't saying it would tear them down.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm getting at.
It sucks that we can't put a sign up to promote the safety of a deaf kid.
I agree, 100%.
When you're allowed to have an advertisement, whether it's a church or a bar, whoever, who cares what?
Yeah, yeah, I agree, 100%. Just because the state doesn't have any sense, doesn't mean we shouldn't. You know, and that's, and that's what I'm saying is, if the state's not coming in here, if they want them down, we'll tell ODOT come take them down then, is what, is what my, how I view it. I mean, I don't think we should be using our resources and pissing off our citizens to take down signs that have been up for how long? Now I understand that you can't go erect new signs, or you shouldn't, can't and shouldn't are two different things, but I, I just don't know who, I'd like a clarification on the actual law. actual law, or is the state saying you have to and if you don't, what's the punishment to the city? Or is it at the city's discretion?
I would defer to Mike one minute.
Mike, do you remember what statute section I was?
For the signs?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I'd have to get back to put the on that one, I am not sure. I mean, considering we get funding through the state, I really don't want to take off ODOT.
No, we don't want to do that.
But I guess to, to Mr. Taylor's question, just while you're looking stuff up, so ODOT can come in and let's just say there's a sign that doesn't conform that's on Rensselaer, which is not a state route, they have say so over that?
That's a public street though, and it's up, it's under our paint.
I had a question.
Bill Stoker, two zero five North Spring Street. So just for clarification, um, according to what Mr. Keith has been telling us about the signs, the motorcycle only parking signs, the, the Bussiris Tap House places on Mary Street beside their establishment, they are illegal then, correct?
What if we just don't kick the hornet's nest and just?
I think we're all just more curious once we're told.
I'm just wondering because if, if that's legal for them to put those out there, why would it be illegal for somebody to put in the tree lawn in front of their apartment?
I believe it says that as long as it's the same or similar shape and it resembles at a glance the, like an official traffic control sign, then it would be a problem.
So the ones he's referencing do not look like a street sign?
I guess that's open to interpretation.
It has Tap House on it. Like, your logo has a little, works this later, thirty-six forty-five, State Route four. So my question is, if the whole argument is that it can't look like an official sign, could it be something that is made that doesn't look like an official sign and they get a variance for the right of way?
That takes me back to my original question is, can we just allow the homeowner to put their own sign up as long as it doesn't violate the state?
That was my question.
Cause they have those little like.
Yell that about the tree lawn.
I, I'm sure there's like some sort of variance to that.
The little plastic children at play sign don't.
That's what I'm talking about, the little plastic children at play signs and then just put like deaf child on it or something, it could be a decoration, I don't know. Anyway, that was my thought.
Okay, I think we've started.
Okay. Then the last I have are removal of projects from our open projects list.
He's got answers.
I have answers. Hold off a second. According to Ohio Administrative Rules, Rule fifty-five oh one, um, whatever that is, colon, semicolon two dash two O two, general provisions for the erection and control of outdoor advertise, no, wait, no, that's not, that's not the right section, right?
Fifty-five sixteen.
Fifty-five sixteen. Anyway, let me get to this. Just to let you know, um, the current issue of the manual on uniform traffic control devices for ODOT is currently standing at eleven hundred and sixty-one pages. So go through this, I do believe it's in the first part saying what signs are allowed to be put in the right of way and others that aren't. So before, I'm just gonna have to find it and give it to you by next meeting. So, I mean, it also goes in the fact that, um, currently, I mean, we're coming up on, on election with campaign signs that are gonna be out, don't put them in the right of way.
But you love it when they do that, Mike.
There are so many signs in the right of way right now even.
I don't, but I did chose to not enforce campaign signs in the right of way, even though I told everybody not to put them there. Um, but nothing should be in the right of way except for traffic control, cautionary signs, um, cautionary signs are yellow, enforcement, traffic is red for stop signs, cautionary are yellow, orange is construction, green is for parks, national parks, brown is points of interest and historic markers. So, um, to have a list of what is allowed to be in the public right of way, it's in the manual.
Would paint work?
Paint is only for survey and for utilities. Or, yeah.
Fuchsia or aquamarine?
No.
I got a big box of crayons.
Highlighter.
It's just, it's set by the state what color sign is for what and where it can be placed.
Adam Frizzell, ten twenty-nine East Mansfield Street. It's Bussiris codified ordinance eleven ninety-one, eleven ninety-one. There are state laws, as Mike says, that prohibit signs that resemble ODOT signs, that's why you can't have those. We have our own local laws, eleven ninety-one, that talk about what you can and can't have in the tree lawn. So can a resident put up their own sign? Bussiris says no. Can anybody put up a sign that looks like a state sign? State says no. There's rules in both places already. So we can go up, but we can't go down. So it provides us the opportunity to be more strict with our signage? I agree, yes. We are not allowed to override state laws with our local ones, I literally just commented that on Free Wire. Um, I, I'm not trying to say we should or shouldn't, I'm just saying, once again, all these rules that you guys are even thinking about already exist. Bussiris codified ordinance, eleven ninety-one. Anybody in the audience that's curious or wants to argue should probably read those laws. I think it's the same problem we have with almost everything in town. No one's enforcing the laws that we have. Thank you. Okay. As far as the inclusion of the deaf and blind, um, the deaf part of the signage, call your representative that can change it. It's not up to us.
Okay. Removal of projects from our open project list. We can remove, um, on April one, twenty twenty-five, the repealing of ordinance forty-six dash ninety-six. Um, that had to de, that dealt with the snow street emergency procedure. That was passed as a non-emergency, a piece of legislation on six twenty-four twenty-five, so that can go off.
And they've taken all those signs down already?
Oh, have they? And then ordinance, uh, well, let's see here, where is it? That's weird. Maybe that's not really health and safety. Oh, Galen Street, yeah. Uh, six twenty-four twenty-five, uh, the traffic control map update for Galen Street, uh, was referred to committee and that legislation was passed on August the fourth twenty-five as non-emergency.
That's effective today.
Yep, and I will be providing to Jenny down at the police department a copy of ordinance thirty-one dash twenty twenty-five, so she can use that to update the traffic control map and file. And you could all clap, I'm done talking for a few minutes. So I guess next is, uh, public participation again. All right.
They've said all they have.
Um, I adjourn our health and safety committee meeting at seven forty-one PM. Thank you.
September fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Service committee called to order at seven forty-two. Members present, Terry, you are on here, Spiegel.
Yes.
See you in chair, Kevin Myers. I myself, Chris Moritz, Chair. Any public participation at this time? Seeing none, I want to finally bring up Title Nine for everybody to be able to look at. Share, comment, see if they find any oopsies in it, had a long time coming. I did find one that was, it's just a Scribner pretty much. It's on, uh, nine fifteen dot O three and it's just, uh, opening the word, uh, both and both and and, but that's not that big a deal.
Is there a reason why we didn't all get a copy of it?
Should have, it should have been, I don't know, Brandon, you sent it to everybody or?
No.
No? Kurt still here? Kurt, did you send it out?
No.
No, I didn't get it until later.
All right, well, I guess we're not able to talk about it since we don't all have it yet.
Send it to everybody.
Send it to everybody, yeah, I'll send it to, I'll send to one that I have.
Don't lose that one.
Don't lose them, no, this one in here.
Throw away your copies.
These are old copies, the other ones we did.
Throw them away.
And that's why, no, I'm actually using these for notes.
Correct, total correct one is electronic now, correct?
Yeah, it's electronic, it's in here and it's very darn good. The only one I felt, like I said, the only thing I found so far is just, uh, nine fifteen O three and that's just a word issue. Got Vicky in the back of my head. All right, uh, any open projects anybody wants to talk about? I do not have any right now, when this is done, I will. There's a whole bunch of this stuff on here. Not seeing none, public participation again? Seeing none, I will join, adjourn at seven forty-five.
Development Committee, September fourth, twenty twenty-five. I call the Economic Development Committee meeting to order at seven forty-seven PM. Members present, Vicky DeShawn, Terry Spiegel, Chris Moritz and Clarissa Schuffler Slater, Chair. First, we have public participation. Seeing none. I'll move on to JED and SEDA. Um, Terry, it looks like I got your email.
Yep.
Um, I haven't got a chance to dive into it.
Chairman, I would like to call Jim Meade, sit in on this, can see a ten in that meeting, okay?
Are we able to, who's, is that, I don't care, is that legal?
You do, you do sit in on it.
Sit in on the meeting? Cause he went to the JED SEDA?
Yeah, don't matter.
I don't care.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, okay. Come have a seat.
I said, uh, all, all, everybody, uh, the mail we got on it, sit it out tonight, so we didn't have time to look it over, but it's, uh, it's pretty in-depth. Let me, let me explain a couple of things, what this stands for. This, uh, E J E D D is Development District, is Joint Economic Development District. This is a contract between the townships and the city allowing them to share tax revenue and services for economic development. I felt at this meeting, the people, one guy was talking, one person didn't show up. But they were geared to Galleon and I did not like that and I stated my opinion on that. They stated that the hotspot in Crawford County is Route sixty and thirty over in Galleon. They have not done, developed that over there at all. I asked, why isn't four and thirty over here being developed? That should be the hotspot. That has more lake traffic than Route sixty does. And they didn't give me an answer. They said, well, we're working on it like they always have. And that kind of, didn't like that answer I got from them, so.
Yeah, Terry, that's an answer from whom?
That was from the person, that was, I believe the.
Emmett Kelly, the attorney, Emmett Kelly.
Yeah, it was him, yeah. He, he made the statement about Route sixty and, and thirty. And I just didn't think it, you know, in the past, they have spent more time in Galleon, they did have Bussiris, in my opinion, on this economic, economic development, but, but the J E D E is a, is something we can look at at townships, if we can get the townships to buy into it, uh, to do tax sharing, we would get more taxes from it and it's something we need to look at. The trouble is getting townships to agree to it, so that's where we're at on that. Now, Jim knows more about the other one, so Jim, you want to explain what the other one is?
It's an agreement that allows municipalities and townships to cooperate on economic growth and can include JEDs within them. Essentially, what this is, Emmett Kelly was the attorney that we talked to, McKenna Laser of the partnership, she was there, she actually got us some, uh, contracts of SEDA and JED and sent them to us and I'm pretty sure that Mr. Spiegel sent those out.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, essentially what it is, is a contract in between the administration and the townships, they set down and they put down guidelines, then they put it to a lawyer and the lawyer comes up with an agreement, then everybody signs it. And it's just to bring factories or bring something to Bussiris or something to the municipality.
The, the J E D D, if anybody will look it up on the Ohio Vice Code, is numbers seven one five point seven zero through point eight three, explains it better. And the SEDA, what she was talking about is Ohio Vice Code, set points oh one, point oh seven. So in your free time, you can look up those, what, what they're talking about.
Seven oh one?
Yeah, seven oh one, point oh seven. It's my suggestion, we should have an ad hoc committee working on this to maybe, maybe get, I don't know if we could get the townships involved and that's where they're going, it's gonna be the drawback on it, I feel. So, uh, we can look at it, we can talk about it, and I'll add a committee if you want to, uh, and see what happens.
So do you suggest that, um, we start reaching out to them and work with administration?
I would, we can, we can throw it out to them and see what kind of response we get back to them. I don't think we'll have much of a response from some of them, but, uh, from past practices, but, uh, who knows? Especially if they know on this J E D E D D that the tax revenue would, would, the city would get more, but they wouldn't like that too much, I don't think. They, what it is, they decide what the tax is, the city would agree to maybe getting sixty percent, they get forty or seventy and thirty, whatever they agree to, that's what would happen. I can't see them doing that, but that's my opinion and.
Well, and that's, in, in considering of that, maybe we could look at even like, um, I know we have the shared aid agreements with the townships. I wonder if, you know.
I don't know.
Discussing it with them, maybe.
We can look at it.
Yeah.
Good.
So maybe setting up a meeting internally first, do you think, Terry? Maybe?
Yeah, I think so.
Would you like?
Do the townships?
Oh, I meant with like, um, meet with admin first.
Sure, I can talk to them about it.
Okay. Um, I'd like to be in that meeting too, if possible.
Okay.
Okay, I'll email you. Kurt?
Hi, Kurt Van Kouser, fourteen fifteen Michigan Drive. So this JED and.
SEDA.
SEDA. I, I, I've thought about this a lot, I'm the one that figured this out, I brung it to council early on last year, and the funny thing is, I didn't even know it existed until I was looking at the Rita tax rates for all their municipalities and I kept seeing, it says like something JED, something JED, like JED District One, JED District Two. And I'm like, what the heck is a JED? So I, I ended up looking into it further and I figured it out, brung it to council, you know. you know, here we are, over a year later. But I've always been thinking, like, where is this something that can be practically implemented? And, so here's a perfect scenario. When, we were down at that Ohio Municipal League Conference way early on last year, and Chris was there, Vicky was there, Zion was there. The one speaker, Mr. Smith, said, "You, as a municipality, are totally crazy if you offer any of your services outside of your municipality without requiring annexation." And he's, you know, talking about water, sewer, stuff like that. Our municipality has taken an approach where we just go out and send all these services out, like the water, and don't require the annexation, and we're basically shooting ourselves in the foot, because once they have the water, why would they ever annex? And we can't get the income tax without the annexation. Now, what the JED is, it's a compromise where you can offer services, do things with the township, but see, the township's always pushed back on the annexation. That's where they, they don't want to lose their land, or whatever you want to call it. And the JED allows them to keep their land. You decide between the administration and them, in this contract, what exact services each is going to provide, and basically, it opens the door to being able to collect a income tax, because the townships by themselves have no authority to collect an income tax. Only a city or a village can collect an income, income tax. And then, so, that's their incentive, is they can possibly get a piece of that pie with the income tax. Now, perfect example, Winford Schools has a water line running out to it from Bucyrus, okay? It was needed back in the time that it was put in, and, you know, whether it was practical to annex all that land all the way out to Winford, you know, that's a debatable thing. But what a JED could have done in that situation is, the, the city and our leaders at the time, if they knew about the JED, what they could have done is, they could have said, okay, we'll get you the water, but we want a JED district on that side of Holmes Township that connects from the outskirts of the city all the way to Winford, and then that would have opened the door to the city getting income tax from the teachers working there.
Right, so I actually thought about, been thinking about this too, and it all kind of ties into the increased water rates and stuff that we've been dealing with, and having like a service fee for out-of-town water users. If we could negotiate with townships and say, hey, we're planning on this out-of-town percentage, because sewer is actually 200% of the in-town rate, if you're out of town, you have a 200%. They changed it when they ran the water line out to Nevada, and they're, we're only charging them the water, so then they completely dropped the out-of-town surcharge. And looking into it and speaking to the water authority over, I just forgot names of Cindy, I can't remember, over in Nevada, they are willing to come back to the table to renegotiate the contract, so we could theoretically reimpose a percentage increase on the out-of, out-of-town water lines. And the reason I think we should is because they're literally just paying for the water. They're not paying any taxes for our water guys to go out there and maintenance the lines, and it's absolutely ridiculous that they're not paying city taxes, they're not paying income tax, they're not paying property tax, any of that. And they're getting just the packaged water rate. They're not, we're not paying them, we're not charging them a service fee. And from my understanding and research I have looked at, I can't find anybody else that just basically says, hey, take our water, we'll service it for free. That's completely insane, so.
They, they don't service inside of town, though.
Oh, not for Nevada?
Only till, till it gets to Nevada.
Not, not for Nevada, but I'm talking about our out-of-town users, like, who live out of town, who have city water.
Well, it's a city line, so we would service it.
Correct, but what I'm saying is that you, me, anybody who's citizen somehow pays into our taxes. So, when we get our water and we're just paying for the water rates, it's because our taxes cover the service fees. The people who live out of town aren't paying Bucyrus taxes.
Well, you pay a water bill, you're paying for all that. With your water bill.
So, the units.
Service of it and everything.
Right, for in-town.
It's all the water department fund.
Right, but what I'm saying is that they're not paying any taxes. That's why in-town versus out-of-town water rate doesn't make any sense. We're not including the service, like the services inside of it.
Okay, so what Terry's trying to explain is, the water is a self-maintaining fund, the Water Enterprise Fund. Theoretically, on paper, it doesn't need any income tax for it to survive. It, it survives off of its collection of.
The bill.
The, the bill from the water service.
Yeah.
The benefit to a city when they require either annexation or some sort of a JED thing in exchange for running lines out, is we get the added ability to potentially have an income tax benefit off of those customers as well, even though that income tax has nothing to do with the funding of that enterprise fund.
Right, and maybe, I'm, maybe it's coming off them conflating the things, I'm not. What I'm saying is that, from what I've seen in practice in other cities, is if you aren't in city limits, they charge a service fee or a percentage more. What, the reason why I'm bringing that up is I think it can tie into the JED SEDA situation, where if we make this blanket 50%, or I don't even know if it's an additional service fee that we add to the bill, because we don't have service fees at all. We're allowed to do that, though. But if we did that, and then, that would be a bargaining chip for JED SEDA. We could say, your water rates will stay in-town rate.
Okay, I, I, I understand now what Clarissa's trying to say.
I do too.
So, what Clarissa just explained is, when, prior to us running the Nevada water line, and I think this kind of happened when we took over the water line running to North Robinson, those customers were going to see an increase, because we had the one and a half rate on that county online. The Reeser administration, in order to get the county and all of those residents on board with us taking over that line, is they dropped the one and a half times thing, and made it to where, basically, if you're outside the city limits, you pay the exact same water rate inside the city. Now, could that be reimposed? Possibly. You could do what Clarissa's saying and say, okay, if you agree to a JED district, those within the JED district won't take the one and a half times hit.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
And as far as Nevada water line, you can, see, that's under its own separate contract.
Yeah.
That's a unique situation. That's a massive amount of water getting sold to a joint, a neighboring municipality, so anything you do with this other stuff could be totally independent and separate of that.
Yep.
Yeah, the way that the verbiage, I actually got a copy of the contract, the way that the verbiage is written currently, it says that it would be the current posted water rates. So, it doesn't discern between out-of-town and in-town, so that's where like, that in-town water rate would have to be added to the verbiage if we brought it back. But from what I had talked to Nevada and John Ernstberger about, is that it all sprouted from that contract that was signed, is why they stopped doing the increase.
This, this, this whole thing with expanding these water lines, it started on Crestline Road, I'm going to say maybe seven, eight, nine years ago, there was like four houses east of State Route 19 and 100, that a couple of people wanted water there, and the Reeser administration at the time pushed to have these water lines ran out there, and they, they thought in their mind, oh, we're going to make all this money off the water. And I, in my mind, I knew the construction cost would be so exorbitant that it would probably never, and they kept pushing it, and then Mark McKeever had Lynn McKeever come in, and then they started talking about running all these water lines all over the whole county, and everybody got all excited and thought, we're gonna, we're gonna make all this money. And then, what ended up happening was, we never made any money. We ended up getting too carried away, we overspent, that's how this, between all these lines going out Stessa Road and, and Sulphur Springs, it turned into, we accidentally had the big million-dollar thing where we actually tanked our water fund, and this whole entire thing with the water lines has basically been a bad deal for the citizens within the city of Bucyrus, because we, we lost our money to maintain our lines in town, because we overspent running lines all out in the county. We never got any benefit from it, because nobody joined a JED, nobody annexed in, nobody joined a SEDA, and I, I, I don't know how you can even unfix it, if, if it's even possible.
I don't even want to point fingers backwards, I think, looking forward. I did speak to someone who works for Willard City Services, and he told me that they sell their water to rural water. They package and sell it out, and my whole thought is, what if we did something like that, and sold the lines to rural water, and just sell them our water? And then they can worry about the lines.
So, that was discussed with the Reeser administration, and the holdup with the Reeser administration was, the Reeser administration wanted Northern Ohio to pay like, basically what any other bulk, or not a bulk, but like a large business commercial customer in the city of Bucyrus would pay. They didn't aggressively, because you can, if you're selling like a super high amount of water, you can make a better deal. And Reeser administration was not willing to make that better deal that was attractive to Northern Ohio, so Northern Ohio said, we'll just keep buying it from where we're buying it. They, Northern Ohio wanted to make a deal with our new plan.
It's rural Ohio. It's not Northern.
Northern Ohio, rural Ohio.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, maybe, maybe with the new administration in, they could possibly talk to Northern Ohio now, and, you know, if you guarantee to buy a million gallons a day, we'll give you this super good deal, we got, or maybe just call it a half a million minimum, but, you know, that is potentially there. But as far as back to the main point here with the JED and SEDA, we need to discontinue this policy of being so eager to run water lines outside of the city limits without getting the forced annexations or the, the JED or the SEDA integrations, because it's, it's, we're shooting ourselves in our own foot as far as any potential tax collection.
Which is why the two things tie together, too. That's why I'm saying that everyone would get a mutual benefit of being able to get an income tax, but also, if they're not incorporated into a JED or SEDA, we could theoretically impose that 50%.
So, any, any future wireline expansion, what we need, what we need to do is, we need to say, okay, you want these wirelines run more? We are going to have to go back and, and start a JED from the edge of the city now where that wireline is, and, and take up all them houses along the way. We're not running any more new water lines, this is how it's going to be. That's what, that's what it needs to be. Go talk to the Ohio Municipal League, they'll tell you the same thing.
Well, yeah, I think we stop, need to stop being a charity for everybody else in the county.
Yeah, because the citizens inside Bucyrus are subsidizing.
Yep.
Out, out-of-town people that are not going to annex in.
Right, I agree.
And then we tanked the water fund, a million dollars in the process. That's, that's basically what's happened.
What do you guys say, energy, when we renegotiate the EMS service off the townships too, use that as leverage as well?
That's, that's what I was talking about, the mutual aid agreements, yeah.
I saw it on, it was the same.
This all can tie into the, I think, so I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I mean, I know we only have three months left, but the new council could continue those ad-hocs, I believe, correct?
Yeah.
So.
And the benefit to the townships with this is, they can get some of that income tax. The townships aren't not getting something out of this deal. They have potential to get an income tax, whether it's 25% of it, or 50% of it, or 60% of it. They could be getting something, and then they don't get the forced annexation, because right now, the homeowners directly adjacent to the city, if they want to annex, they can do it without the consent of the township.
I think that's what happened.
That's what happened with Aldi. Aldi got in, the township had nothing to do with it. They didn't agree to it, I don't even think the town, Winston Township was even asked.
They were upset about it.
They were mad about it, but the JED, you can actually have it wrote in a JED contract that there's, there will be no annexations. There, like those, those situations where the adjoining property owners can consent to it without the township, you could, you could actually use a JED to block that from happening, so the townships could have benefit there as well. They, they don't lose any more land, it stays the way it is, we write it out in the JED, this is how it's going to be, and there you go.
I think we need to have a, have somebody come in and talk to us about it.
Yeah.
Have that lawyer come in, maybe, maybe he would set, come to a committee meeting and just talk, explain better what it, how it works. I'll get ahold of him, if you will. Will do. Thanks, thanks Kurt.
Thanks Kurt. Another problem we have is, we run all these lines out there. Most people don't want them, they can't afford, even though we provided, with your grant for the tap, that's free, people still can't afford to run through their house, so. It's a catch 22 thing. You can run all those lines out there if you want to, there's over 500 taps up right there right now, that the city had put out there for people to use, over 500, that we've put out in the country so far, and only, I think, 106 have signed up for water service, out of that 500 or so. So, it's, what do you do? Waste all that money and there was one to tie into. So, we got 100, over, just a little over 100 people that actually wanted the water, for all that work was done. If, if, I did the math on this, because it's going to bring it up, and finance, sooner or later, one of these days is going to bring it up. If everybody did tap into it, it's almost 400 a year, 1,000 a year revenue for the city at the rates they are now, if everybody would tap into it. But, but it is what it is, for what we've got now.
All right, anything else on JED SEDA? All right, so next I have the bed tax. I know we've brought this up previously, I did some more research here. So, the Ohio Revice Code allows us to leverage up to 3%, which, if anyone at home wants to know, it's 5739 dot oh eight. We are capped at 3%. If we were a charter city, we could do higher, but we're not. So, we have to stay there, that's where we're at now. I had, I had suggested increasing it previously, seeing that, like, Cleveland has a 14.5%, Columbus has an 8%, but they're charter cities, so they can use Home Rule to basically override that. For us, though, Chris brought it up before, there was a new law that, or House Bill one something, it went through. And so now, it's stating that the definition of a hotel has been changed. And it includes Airbnbs, bed and breakfast, Verbos. It's actually pretty extensive on what it all covers now. So, our, our ordinance currently doesn't account for that, and I can bring that back up, give me just a second. So, I believe we just need to have a discussion with the law director to see what we need to do to make it in compliance, because I don't think it is currently. Put them side by side. Well, it's got a handout for, the Ohio Legislative Authority made a handout, I can send that to you, gives you a starting point for it. Gives you a starting point for it. So that's all I have on that currently. Anyone else have anything on bed tax?
Nope.
All right, and that brings us to the tax abatement, or the re-rep program that I had proposed. Let me pull my notes, one second. I did hand out, a handout that I had Kaylee print for me, back in twenty eighteen, I believe. The partnership contracted with the company to get a housing study done, and there is amount of, sorry, I'm trying to pull my notes up. One second. My apologies. There is a significant amount of need. Looks like, actually it was done in twenty nineteen. It's stating that we need, like, I think it was over two hundred more units than we, than we already have. It stated, and I can get that out so we can post it on documents on demand, that we lack moderate and upscale rental housing, which is the company found to be necessary to retain a modern workforce. Existing subdivisions have been stagnant, very, very few new home sales in more than a decade. It looks like we have an unmet demand of two hundred and fifty-six rental and for-sale units, so that we, we were under that, two hundred and fifty-six rental units stated is necessary, is being asked for, that we don't have. And they also stated that a hundred and twenty-four senior housing units as well. Nearly half of all the jobs in Crawford County are located in Bucyrs, yet most of our workers live elsewhere because we don't have the housing stock. So we are down on housing stock. So it looks like they did do some of the townships, but they did explicitly outline Bucyrs in their findings, they did both the townships and Bucyrs. So there is a need for it, and the reason that the re-rep fits into that is that existing hous- housing owners can renovate without punishing it and taxing spikes. I went ahead and did some deep dive into this as well. There was discussion about it only being municipality, the Bucyrs municipal taxes. It's actually not accurate. The Ohio Revised Code that deals with tax abatements actually states it's all taxes, including county taxes. That's why we have to get permission from the Bucyrs City Schools, or any of the, or Winfield, or Crawford, whatever district these people are in. Because they're outside of our jurisdiction too, so it's all tax, all, not income, all property taxes would be abated. It would affect all taxes, not just the municipal taxes. So I think the other thing is to focus on too, is that we do have an aging senior population. People are wanting to downsize, people can't afford to maintain their home. If we had more senior rentals, that would fit that gap too. So there's just a couple of questions, I guess, that us as, as the committee need to discuss first. If, that the program should be citywide or focus on specific areas? I'll give you my thoughts on it. I think it should be citywide, and it should focus on the type of property. So if it's a declared nuisance property and someone purchases that property, I think it should be like a one hundred percent, any of the, not, not just on new taxes, but also on current taxes. We can do that. And the reason why I think that is because there are properties that are not being maintained. There's also properties that are behind on taxes. And we could try to work with a county lawyer that does the, I just forgot what the formal process is called, when you sell the property, it's back on taxes.
Foreclosure.
Forec-, is it foreclosure? Okay. So, and the, like the sheriff, the auction. If someone buys a property like that, again, we weren't getting income on that property anyway, give them the one hundred percent if they would renovate or designate it a multifamily, what have you.
Question for you on that.
Yeah.
Would that just be, purchase it to make it into your own personal dwelling? Or can somebody come in here, buy it to fix it up, to rent it out?
So that's what I was, that's what I really wanted to focus on. Most of the community, the CRAs that I've seen, focus mostly on people investing in rental properties. However, I think, I talked about the emotional buy-in of citizens. I think it would be good to extend it to both, like live-in, homestead, whatever definition you wanna use, people who are living in the property they own and also the ones renting it out. Now, I know, I was gonna ask Vicki, in reading it, there is a established housing agent, someone who goes out and files the paperwork, does the yearly inspection to see if the renovations are actually being done. Were you that person?
I was the CRA housing officer.
That's the word I'm looking for.
And we just had, or I should say the, there were just companies, like Minell Milling was a CRA. My gosh, that's been nine years ago. I can't think if anyone else was a CRA.
So the ordinances state that we have to have a, a board, a CRA board.
Yes.
And then a housing authority, now, uh, officer. Now, the ordinance is still there, but I think it's inactive. I don't even think we have anyone on a CRA board currently. It's basically inactive.
Pardon?
It's inactive, I'm guessing.
I, I don't know what's happened since I retired.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I can't, there's no CRA board that meets, so it's something that we'd have to rebattleize the entire program anyway. But we would have to establish a board, two fifths of them have to be city officials, and I thought that it would be pertinent for all types of residential users to be represented. So like, you know, if it's a, I think it said it was like nine, so if like two of them were officials, one being like the economic development chair, maybe the mayor, I'm not really sure how you wanna lay that out. And then we have, you know, people who invest in rental properties, homeowners, and then, and renters. I feel that everyone should be represented in these decisions because the renters are going to be affected by the CRAs as well. I mean, I, I don't know if we have to do another housing study. The online resources through the Ohio Department of Development say that has to be on, one on file, does not say when it has to be done. If we're just basically updating the ordinance from the previous CRA ordinance, I don't know if we have to provide a new one, just keep this one on file. It doesn't have to be submitted to be approved. We are allowed to do that on our own. We don't have, there's no like oversight on it. So I guess, like, with that being said, like I said, the, I think it should be citywide. I'm open to discussion on that. And I think that's where we should start. And who should serve as the housing officer? That's the other thing that we have to think about. So I guess I'll open the floor for discussion.
I'm pretty sure in the, well, when I served as a CRA housing officer, and then I also served as the enterprise zone manager, that when they started to do the legislation for CRA, they named me specifically. Then I'm recalling, they changed it and just put in law clerk. So whoever was the law clerk.
Gotcha.
That was one of the positions that, you know, they were given. And I'm almost positive, if you look on the city's website, it shows our current, well, she now has a different title, I think they changed it to legal clerk, or not legal clerk,
Administrative assistant?
Law clerk was the title they gave me, but I, legal assistant, they give it a different title.
Can I ask you what, what you did as that seat, like at Mill, out there at the Milling place, what did, what did that entail you had to do?
Um, I did, I had nothing to do. There were no inspections
Okay.
done by the Minell Milling Company. As the CRA housing officer, when someone came into the city that wanted to get a CRA tax abatement, I was the contact person. Then I set up a meeting with the city administration, the, the county, and then also with the schools. And it's not only the schools, but it's also the vocational school as well. So like if, you know, the company was in the city limits, then it was a Bucyrs school board that we had a representative from, as well as, you know, representative from Pioneer.
Sure.
We would all then meet, talk about, you know, what the company wanted to do. There was an application that I had to give them to fill out. And then, of course, there is the tax. With the schools, the schools never lost their school funding. They were made whole by the companies. So the companies, we would have a contract or an agreement that was signed between the companies and the schools, and that said, okay, you're gonna pay this much for year one, you're gonna pay this much for year two. And that's pretty much what the, we had more enterprise zone agreements. And it's my understanding, gosh, I think enterprise zone agreements are done. And I don't even think you have any actual CRA agreements. Cause I know Minell was the last, and that.
So, I mean, the ordinance is still there, so someone could apply for it as it stands. The residential abatements.
There is no residential.
Right.
Yeah.
It was just for industry, but the residential, like I looked at Bowling Green, they have one too, that does focus on residential, and I think Youngstown also has one that focuses on residential. The residential properties outlined in the ordinance, or the Ohio Revised Code, states that we actually don't have to confer with the schools for that, so we can abate. But I don't want, personally don't want to cut into revenue for the school district, that's why I said any new taxes, so any revaluation that happens for these renovations. And I know it had been stated that major repairs, you know, replacing a roof, adding HVAC, we're, we're talking about things that are gonna, you know, be major renovations for houses, there would be a floor. I know Terry said that he had a problem with the twenty-five thousand. Looking at BG, BG's is twenty-five thousand floor, I think Youngstown is a twenty-five thousand dollar.
Don't take much for twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah. Yeah, but someone buys a house for twenty grand and they put twenty-five thousand into it, that's, you know, so that's the kind of things that we're.
It could be a starting point.
Yeah, starting point. But yeah, it's gonna be stuff that affects, you know, ex, not expansions, what's the word I'm looking for? Add-ons to properties, you know, major renovations and structural improvements, stuff that's, that on the micro scale, that's what we're talking about. But we also need to think about areas that have the potential to have these new multifamily or, you know, townhomes and stuff like that. Looking at vacant property that we're not, either not getting much investment on anyway, and then targeting the landlords who invest in property, to buy blighted property, and providing that abatement for even the current taxes, not just new ones. So I think it has to be multi-leveled. So I guess the question is, do we wanna keep these conversations in economic development? Or is this something we would like to refer out to an ad hoc? Cause I think these discussions are gonna get long, it already has.
That's what I was, I was thinking too, it should be more like an ad hoc.
Yeah, do an ad hoc.
Also, what I was thinking too, also, when you're talking about this, we have a governor's question coming up, and if we get a certain governor in there, he does what he wants to get done, property tax going away.
Right. Understand, I understand that as well, but in, in talks with Riordan McLean, the
Could go away.
legislate, the legislature, legislature right now is against it because there's no replacement. It would basically be cutting off a lot of services with no way to, to establish it. So it'd have to be a comprehensive overhaul where it's income tax or sales tax or what their proposal is, but.
It's gonna be more taxed, it just won't be property tax, we're just taxing everything else.
Right. But I think we, I think we could probably.
Got nine seats to do it now.
Right. Probably beat a dead horse with trying to figure out what they're going to do, so I think we have to just operate in a bit, you know, how many times have we restarted or said, well, that's not working out, we're gonna drop that, so, but.
I think an ad hoc would be worth it.
I think that's where it needs to go, yeah.
So an ad hoc, do we have to refer, that's a full council for an ad hoc, or how does that work? I don't know, how, how was the plating? Jim, do you know how like the plating and the, or the zoning board is full council? No? Okay. All right, so we can bring that up at the next, next meeting then. Any, any other thoughts on jet, or the re-rep program?
We can discuss, I think we can discuss it for now.
All right. Well, other than that, I have open projects.
Urgent care isn't called urgent care anymore. We've got a bunch of annexation stuff on here. Is it ever gonna go anywhere or not?
Well, and that's, and that's, right. And that's the question where if we pick up the JED/ CETA, which again, we probably have an ad hoc for that as well, we can discuss that there too.
Cause that would take six or seven of our care.
Yeah, you talked about that at, I believe it was at our last committee meeting, and it was decided, just leave them on, because I think Terry, you said, you know, there's always the possibility.
Always.
Always a possibility, yeah.
They're probably not going to, but.
Never know.
Yep. So.
We, basically like you said, if we get, if they get our services, we're almost gonna have to make them anymore.
Yeah. Either make them or, yeah, I think the JED/ CETA is probably gonna be our
Yeah, yeah.
workaround on that one. All right.
Good enough.
If that's all, I have public participation.
Greg White, eleven twenty-five Hillcrest Drive. From my understanding from the JED and CETA meeting, did not go very well. I talked to several hundred, several individuals about that meeting. My first question is this, before we go any further with any one of these two things, I think the biggest thing is, is a letter needs to be sent to each of the townships, whether they're interested or not, in either one of these programs. And quit wasting time, and say, do you want in? Do you want out? Do you wanna talk about this anymore? Yes or no? That will solve that problem right now. Because we're just gonna be beating a dead horse more dead.
I think, Greg, if you said, most of the trustees and the townships, they wouldn't know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
They have, it has to be explained what it is.
Well, the thing is, I think, from my, my understanding and talking to some of those people, was that they were done. Okay? That's, and you have a different opinion, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't have, I don't have a period on it.
But I think, I think it's just a flat letter saying, do you, do you wanna further discuss this or not before we waste any more time on these, these subject matters? On the bed tax, okay, we only have two hotels in this town. And we don't have that many Airbnbs or bed and breakfasts in this town. And raising a bed tax to Cleveland or anybody else is, is outlandish. And raising a bed tax to Cleveland or anybody else is, is outlandish. This would be Cyrus, Ohio. We're not a major tourist attraction. We don't have buses coming in here 24/7, all these places. So, you know, let's be realistic on that.
Well, we're not going to raise. We can't raise it.
We can only raise it to 30, right, no.
The only way we can raise this is we change up.
That's the cap.
So 3% is the cap?
Yeah. And that's what we're at, so we're not raising it.
But somebody was explaining, someone was explaining that we could take it higher. It's all on tape.
Not as long as we're, this body can't.
I had, I had stated that when I was a citizen, I brought that to the town hall. So I was clarifying on what I had brought up previously, that we can't raise it over 3%. However, the new house bills includes Airbnb and Burrows. And yeah, we don't have a lot right now, but we're going to stay narrow-minded and think we're just going to be a dwindling town, then we can just drop it and miss out on revenue.
You know, there's a way, there's a way we can get this, but they were in charter, we're not going to do that.
Right.
Well, and the other thing too is, and I'm not trying to correct you, Terry, or anything, but that was 61.
Yeah, you're right, 61, not 60.
61 between 309 and 30.
No, it was, it was relative. 61, you're right, you're right.
61, it's between 309 and Gayan and out to state route 30.
Yeah, you're right.
So, and if you guys don't remember, you know, the interim director from the, from the partnership, Kurt Timberlake, came in and gave a presentation, okay, not too long ago. Okay, I went back and reviewed that tape. He talked nothing about who? Gayan, Crestline. Gayan, Crestline.
Yes, I know.
And that was the whole thing. It was never about Bussaras at all.
I know.
Okay. So the thing is, I think we're being left out completely over the years. Not just this year, but in the past years. We're paying $50,000, okay, to bring in stuff to us, but yet they're talking about other communities and not about us. And I will agree with you, that kind of ticks me off.
But the thing is, they say it's still Crawford County and Bussaras benefits from that in the long run. But where?
Show me, show me, show me the facts of where we actually benefit from this. Because the other thing too is, we don't have any jobs in this town.
No.
Okay?
No.
So, and we don't, we're not going to get any industry until we get the wastewater treatment plant up and running. And probably 20, what, 2035 now, possibility?
Still got the north end, that we can still put industry in there.
We can put some industry in there, but we can't put a major water user or discharge user.
But there we can, nowhere else in town we can.
They have to put their own treatment in.
They have to put their own treatment in, yeah, that's true.
Anywhere else, yeah.
So, and the other thing too is, when it was talked about the water lines. Okay, I kind of agree, we need to charge a surcharge for people outside. But the only thing is, we inherited a major problem along when we did those water lines and accepted those water lines. We accepted the county sewer lines. Okay? And there, and Terry knows what I'm talking about. They are in a critical condition right now.
Not the sewer line, we, the lift stations.
The lift stations, right. So that's part of the lines, basically. It's all the system. But they're in critical condition right now. And who's going to end up paying for that? Guess what? Us resident city, Bussaras is going to pay for that now to revamp those systems.
I think that it comes from the, they'll come from the citizens out there, where they're at.
But is, does now...
They get charged for that.
Let me ask you this. Didn't they plug some people out there already?
I don't know that. It's been since I left.
So isn't Sugar Grove completely shut off?
I think so.
Yes, they are. So Sugar Grove is completely shut off from sewer systems because those people, my understanding, they own, owe a lot of money to the city. And some of their bills are over $1,200 or more.
I don't know about that. That was after I left there.
So, I mean, we have, we have infrastructure problems that we're going to have to end up paying for. And the last thing that I wanted to talk about was, and I don't want to get into too much detail because we've been sitting here a long time. But this, this plan on the RIRAP program, I saw this many, many years ago. Back in 2000 and believe between 13 and 15. This program was presented by Dave Williamson of Partnership. The same exact program was, was developed, and I truly believe this to be true, was Dave Williamson. And as I forget, what, what was Mr. Funk, Gary, Gary Fankhauser? The ones that, because Dave started back in 2006 with the Partnership. And the other guy took over, I think, believe 2015. Okay? And this was part of the original 2020 Vision Plan. Okay? It goes back, Terry knows what I'm talking about.
I've seen it.
Yep, I've seen it too. And that's how I found, when I saw some of those slides from the last presentation, I'm like, I knew where that came from.
I honestly had no idea.
So I'm just saying, I saw that, when I saw that presentation, I did some phone calling, and I found that that's exactly where that presentation came from. Because those two gentlemen actually developed that as part of the 2020 Vision Plan for Crawford County.
Well, I'm sorry to tell you that I did not reference that at all in my research. And I don't believe that anyone...
They never followed up on it.
No, they put it, they put the Dog and Punny Show on for three months, and then it went to wayside because they were more worried about the industrial part.
Yeah.
Yes. You know what I'm talking about?
Yep.
Yep, exactly. I saw some of this stuff that some people had. The other thing too is, I don't think $25,000. People are not going to be able to afford that in this town. Medium income is only $34,000. How is somebody going to afford $25,000 to fix up a house? And you know what? And what really makes me mad too, is because my property taxes went up this last time, is every time someone sells a house in my zone, okay? Because that's how the county has it, all broke down, and it's in zones, okay? So if someone sells a house for more than what the replacement value or the estimate value of that house, guess what? Everybody's taxes in those zones are going to go up. Because, so some people put their house up for $340,000 or $350,000. Matter of fact, in my zone, there's one now for $435,000. And there's another one in my zone that's going up, is on Zillow, for $490,000, okay, in my zone. So if those houses sell for that, guess what's going to happen the next tax evaluation? That zone is, everybody's taxes are going to skyrocket again. I just want to point that out. That's how they, the county bases the taxes on assessments on, on people's property. It's not about the plumbing inside, it's not about the roof, it's not about your windows, it's about how many square feet it is. Do you have any exterior structures? Do you have a deck on the back? Do you have a fence? And what the zone prices went up, and that's how your taxes are assessed. And Terry knows what I'm talking about. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Comment on the JED. I think townships don't really can, I don't think there'd be a benefit to them, especially with the townships that border the municipal limits, do not have zoning. So I, I think they just, there is no benefit form if they don't have zoning enacted, which they don't. And...
And they benefit from the income tax though? If they got 30% of the income tax in there, that's what they'd be...
Yeah, see, most of township income is state gas tax. And plus they get money from ODOT on the, on the straight line mileage on their streets or the roadways. So if Timken subdivision ever got annexed into the city, the whole reason why township is very hesitant to let that happen is they're going to lose tax money from the roads. So that's one of the reasons why townships do not like to annex, because they're going to lose tax money. And so also to reference Greg's comment, I do submit quarterly the list of building permits to the auditor's office, which is required. And so they get a list of all improvements in town. All the building, all the roof jobs, all the decks, all the fences. And that gets adjusted in your taxes. So just to let you know on people paying, I have seen roof permits anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 for houses. Mike's roofing is pretty good at around there. And fences for anywhere from $1,500 to $4,000 here in town this summer. And of course, solar is anywhere from $12,000 up to, I do believe one was for $35,000. So, yep.
Thank you.
Any more public participation? Hearing none, I'll adjourn at 8:45 PM.
Finance Committee, September 4th, 2025.
Call the Finance Committee meeting to order at 8:46 PM. Members present are James Mee, Christopher Maritz, Vicky Deschawn, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Public participation.
What time is that, Tom? I'm sorry, I can't hear you back here.
Public participation.
Kurt Fankhauser, 1415 Michigan Drive. We are almost at the end of the third quarter for this year. So the, the budget, you know, which was referred to 2025 budget, was referred at the very beginning of this year back to the committee to possibly make cuts. Nothing ever came of it. It's quite obvious that the Finance Committee has done nothing to alleviate anything with the, the budget deficit. Now, Kaylee did say that this year's deficit went away because was it an extra income tax, back tax collection? That's not going to potentially happen next year. That's like a one-time gift somebody gave you. I paid my back taxes that I owed, okay? So it, it kicked the can down the road a little bit longer. So, you know, every time we have a regular council meeting and the committees give the reports, Finance Committee gives a report of no report, okay? So I've came up and gave suggestions because it's been said, well, where's the suggestions? Well, I, I had two. Rita was one. And contract out the trash and charge a franchise fee. Potentially bring in a couple hundred thousand on that. So I have gave some suggestions, okay? What it's looking like to me is after November, there's just going to be, if we need the extra money, we're just going to dip into the out-of-town tax credit. Because at that point in time, the elections will be over and nobody will have anything to lose. Half the council's an outgoing lame duck. So that's how, you know, we'll alleviate any potential budget shortfalls for the 2026. So if it does become to the point where we go into fiscal emergency or fiscal caution or any of that, I do want to say that I would be willing, because I will no longer be on council. And when that state auditor committee gets formed, if, if it ever comes to that and they have to have some citizens volunteer to be on it, I would be willing to volunteer to be one of those people. So at this point in time, I guess that's it.
For the record, this committee did remove the out-of-town tax credit from its open projects, and every member on this committee has stated publicly they have zero desire for that, so I just want to reiterate that. Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Also, just to go on that point, since Kurt brought this up here. A lot of us have talked to administration and Kaylee about what can be changed. Can there, is there anything we can possibly cut? I personally myself, I know Kevin has too, have been to administration. There are, there are stuff being done out there that we can't see done and we can't talk about yet, that we're making ways to make cuts. They can't be brung up until it's time to be brung up. And there's reasons why they haven't been brung up. Thank you.
Robert Taylor, 411 Plum Street. Well, since Kurt brought it up, Rita, just, this is just for you guys here and for the public in general. I, if I'm sitting back there in January, I will not support Rita. I would support looking at privatizing the trash pickup. That's one way to cut a lot of costs from the city and put personal responsibility onto the citizens and the homeowners, which is where it belongs, my opinion. And as far as the out-of-town tax credit, this is strictly for the voters, since Kurt brought up there's an election at hand. If it comes down to the financial viability of the city, I will vote yes to eliminate the out-of-town tax credit. The city's got to remain financially viable. And if we're not willing or can't make the cuts that we need to make, then something's got to give. And because we've kicked the can down the road for the last 10 years, or however long, that at some point in time, that decision's got to be made. And as I stated at Tuesday's meeting, everyone I've talked to, and it's a small, very small group of people, everyone has told me the same thing. They, they don't want to see cuts to the safety forces. And to the fire department's credit and to the police department's credit, the fire department will be going down to a minimum of five. When they have someone called off, they won't be, will be reducing the overtime there. That's a good step in the right direction. And I think the police department's done a pretty good job with how they manage their, their manpower as well with overtime. And not to, not to rile anyone up or to point fingers, if we could stop with the irrelevant and egregious stupid FOIA request and body cam stuff, we could eliminate some overtime and manpower there too. That all adds up. Whether one admits it or not, the small stupid bickering that we do is costing a tax, bears money. So if we're concerned about the budget, let's start there with some of our behavior. That'll help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation? All right, moving on. You have in front of you the appropriations for September 4th, 2025. Auditor Lewis.
These appropriations are for the purpose of reduction of supply and demand of opioid use and distribution within the community. Just a, I know I spoke a little bit about this on Tuesday, but these are opioid settlements. You know how there are a lot of settlements due to the large influx of opioids that went into the communities in the 90s and 2000s? This is a settlement from those companies that we receive throughout 18 years. So we need to appropriate some of that money because I recently received about $60,000 in checks. This is in Fund 268, the opioid settlement fund under Program 7110 Police Department. And Item Line 25 Capital Outlay, increasing the budget to, or additional $60,000.
All right. Any questions of the auditor?
What exactly does money be used for?
If you recall before, it was used, I believe, primarily for Operation Hope. So it's, it can be used for anything to mitigate drug use in the community. So it can be used...
Prevention and treatment, I believe was the way it was worded.
Yes, prevention and treatment. So anything that you could use to, you know, potentially prevent the spread of drugs in your community or, you know, set up a program for, to assisted rehabilitation or something like that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? I will entertain a motion requesting emergency legislation for this appropriation.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Mee and a second by Mr. Maritz. Is there any further discussion? If not, Mr. Mee?
Yes.
Mr. Maritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschawn?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Deschawn, I'll start with you on the open projects you wish to entertain this evening.
None.
Mr. Maritz? Mr. Moritz?
I would just, uh, like to remind everybody that we still have on open projects, selling, uh, of all those water lines that are put out there for, to Northern Ohio Rural Water, it's still on our project list. We'll keep it there, but I'm just letting the public know that it's actually still on our project list as an option.
All right. Anything further?
No.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Sorry. I just wanted to add that, just so everybody knows, on council and off, um, you're all given a copy of all the reports, as well as the detailed trial balance, and you can always manage as the city, or monitor the city's finances that way and how well we're doing as well. And if anyone has any issues reading the reports or understanding them, they can always come to my office, and I'd be more than happy to assist them.
Thank you. Mr. Mee?
I'm good.
All right. Public participation.
Greg White, eleven twenty-five Hillcrest Drive. I appreciate you guys saying that it's been canceled, but it doesn't mean you can't bring it back by the end of the year. And I kinda agree with Mr. Taylor a little bit, that if you're gonna bring that tax credit back on the books, that cuts need to be made from the city first before you go after the taxpayers, okay? That's plain and simple, because I don't think that's fair at all. I take a person's word that they committed to it, but if you turn your back, guess what? It's, it's not gonna be good in the long run. The other thing I wanted to bring up, too, is, you know, we, we've been talking about finances and, and people coming to work and stuff like that, so, you know, do we have anybody missing from, you know, work that hasn't shown up to work for a while, that's still getting paid on the payrolls? Um, my understanding, there has been. Uh, the employee is not coming to work to this office. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Kurt Fankhauser, fourteen fifteen Michigan Drive. So I would just like to publicly state, because it was brought up earlier by a speaker, the public records request, uh, I think FOIA request was mentioned, even though that is a federal thing, it's not actually an Ohio thing, Freedom of Information Act requests are federal, not state. I offered, I offered to pay the overtime to the police chief to have my public record request with the police department fulfilled. I do not, he declined that. I would have thought-
Can we keep it down, please? Thank you. Go on.
I would have thought that, you know, a young officer looking to make a little extra money with overtime would have been glad to do that work. If I was a twenty-one-year-old, freshly hired, I would have been, yeah, 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 I'd love to get some overtime. And in, also into that, over the last, like, eight, nine years, I have volunteered my time to go up to a local business that has a security camera system many, 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 many times, especially on a Friday night or a Saturday night, and help the police department get video surveillance off of a, you know, highly trafficked spot that happens to be a city, uh, parking lot in town. And I was never compensated, I was never, uh, you know, I lost all of my personal free time to accommodate that, but then, when I wanna get some public record requests or some videos, and I even offer to pay for the overtime for it, I am chastised, okay? So, I just wanna make that perfectly clear, because it seems to be getting brought up quite a bit lately of this wasting of time stuff. And ninety percent of these public record requests could probably be taken care of if the city was more utilizing the documents on demand, which I have pushed for, and I'm thinking with the recent hiring of the, the clerk tonight, that since she was the one that initiated documents on demand for the city way back when, I'm, I'm hoping to get more of this stuff on documents on demand, so that these public record requests, you know, they're readily available, it's already online, you know, it's all public record. I don't know why it's not put on there in the first place, the technology exists. So, I hope you guys, you know, come to the conclusion here that everything being done is public work, it's, you know, the, the money, the budgets, the employee pay, you don't know how, what lengths had to be gone through to obtain the pay and salaries of city employees, and, and it took probably two months to get that stuff, okay? So, you know, if that stuff is put on the documents on demand where it should be, you wouldn't have to take the public records request in the first place. So, that's it. Have a good night.
Any further public participation? Um, Auditor Lewis?
I just wanted to respond a little bit to that. I know that before a meeting, I provided the entire twenty twenty-four year end payroll register to Mr. Fankhauser, which had every city employee's salaries listed on it. I just wanted to say that. And I also just wanted to give him a chance to clarify that he is saying he himself is the council president personally offered to pay the police chief overtime. I just wanna make sure that's, I don't know how he thinks that he could have paid them overtime.
Or he could have looked at the videos or creeped on them.
Okay. You know, if the city incurred overtime, I could make a donation to write a check to the auditor's office, you could put it in the city's treasury, okay? That way it's not me, you know, costing the city anything. And Mr. Frizell's over here in the audience, he keeps saying creeping, okay? I don't know what he's talking about, but public records, any video of security footage, body cam footage, unless it's, you know, something covered by Ohio revise code that can't be released, it is a public record. And if somebody requests it, you know, and I have legitimate reasons for the requests I have made, okay? One, I was accused of drawing off a clerk-
I'm gonna stop you, I think we're getting off topic of what the Finance Committee can cover here. I understand you wanted to clear your name here, but I don't believe it pertains to Finance Committee business.
Okay, and the payroll register, I think that needs to be on documents on demand. Let's get it on documents on demand, okay? And I understand there's certain things on it that probably needs redacted, but let's be putting this payroll register on the documents on demand. All the stuff in that that's relevant used to be in the annual payroll report Excel file that the previous auditor made every year, but for some reason, you are saying you don't want to make that anymore.
And to, to that, can I say that I am totally fine putting the payroll register on there? My issue with creating that report is that it's a hand-done report, so if someone needs to repopulate that in the future, it depends what, you know, parameters they set. I would rather provide something like the payroll register that is done automatically and can be rerun in the future, and it has much less chance for human error, whether I'm doing or three auditors from now are doing it. So I don't have a problem posting that on documents on demand. And that was my only hesitation, because, in my opinion, the accounting software already provided a report very similar to that, with more information even on it, and I would rather use that one than one I'm preparing.
I, I understand you have software that can generate a lot of reports, and there's probably reports that it can do that is not even known to me, but would probably be a nice little trove of information of the city's finances, and I, I'd like to get those reports and put them on documents on demand, too. And, you know, for four dollars and twenty-five cents more per hour that two employees are making in your office, I would be thinking a little bit more extra work can be done out of that office.
My office is very busy all the time, especially-
Well, you know, I go into the council clerk's office sometimes, and, and the walls, you can hear what's going on, and I hear a lot of goofing and giggling and laughing a lot of times when I go into the council-
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off there, she's not under acquisition, to use your words. Um, any further public participation?
Clarissa Slater, thirty-six forty-five State Route Four. I feel like this is never gonna get put to bed, um, with the out-of-town tax credit issue. I just wanna point out that that was really, I think, the defining moment for council in general, because at, what was it, the third council meeting, there was a presentation that was asked to be given by, Mrs., or Ms. Lewis, was asked to give a presentation about the city's finances and how the out-of-town tax credit would affect that. I think it's important to realize that, like, the outrage that's come from it came from a very small, specific group of people that brought that up in the first place. Kevin, you were actually the first, I went back and watched, you were the first one to mention it, however, you said it was being brought up at the behest of the council president. So, I just wanna point back that this all goes full circle. Let's not just be outraged by something because it could be bad. Let's focus on what we have going on now and what we can do, and not focusing on micromanaging people. I don't think that's gonna be good for anybody. I guess that's all I have for now, I think I had more, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any last public participation? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at twenty-one oh eight.